So how many people on the curling team?
Four sides, and they have four games. You've got thirty two. Yeah, thirty two people on the night, so ninety six people.
I have about twenty seconds here. You all set?
They do. You have a regular season, they get the playoffs, but they also, when you have a you have a curling tournament, they call it a bond spiel. So they actually host a mud spiel during the spring mud out season. So like April eighteenth to twentieth, they bring people in from all over New England.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Really?
The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for February twenty-six at this hour. As usual, we'll begin our meeting with a salute to the American flag. Please rise and join Councilor Armin Bullock in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call a roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowns?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Counselor Littman will be here, but he's delayed.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Baldick?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
Present. Let the record show that five of six city councilors are in attendance at the beginning of the meeting, constituting a quorum. I will also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize Counselor Bullock for a statement.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason that I'm here tonight, I'm not going to stay very long, but I thought it would be appropriate to come here and address whoever's here in this room and the people that are watching TV, that I'm home. I can't stand it. I sit all day, but I'm gaining, and that I appreciate all of the support that I got while I was in the hospital, and even today I still get people coming in and calling me, so I appreciate that. But what I'm here tonight for is to tell you that I am still working for the city, and I will take any questions that come over the phone to me. If you have a problem you want to discuss with me, call me. I'll be more than happy to talk to you about it, and if I don't have the answer, I know where I can get it, so I'll always be able to get back to you. So I figured that this would be a good time to come and let all you folks know out there that I'm still available. So I want to thank you all, and it's just been an overwhelming experience for me. It's the first time I've ever been hospitalized in, I don't know, fifty years, I guess, but anyway, I just wanted to come here tonight and let you know that I am home and I will take calls, and if I'm not there, my answering machine will take it and I'll get back to you. But I just want to keep involved and keep things going in Ward Six and in any other ward that calls me, so I, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point, I'm going to declare a brief recess of the meeting. Don't anybody go anywhere. This won't take long, but we're going to set up a photograph here. Where do you want us, Madam Clerk?
I figured if he sat right there and you guys stood around him, maybe.
Do you want me to sit or stand?
Do a couple of standing and a couple of sitting.
Standing.
A couple, a couple sitting, and the rest can kind of stand in behind me. Donna, you're going to come up.
I wasn't sure I was.
You're the rose among the thorn. Of course you got to be here.
Make sure I'm not the thorn among the roses.
No, no, no. I can assure you that's.
Need to crowd in horizontally here.
That way it kind of balances out three sitting and.
Good, I won't see my jeans.
Come on, I'm squeezing.
Get them in middle.
Little bunny ears.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
You got your coat in? Where's your coat? They got it? That's where you're heading out.
Hello, the folks, for those of you who don't know, that short guy there, he's my youngest son.
is minutes. Council has the regular meeting minutes for our meeting on February twelfth. So are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? In, in the absence of any changes or corrections, I will declare the meeting minutes for February twelfth to have been approved by acclamation. We have no consent in action items tonight. Let the record show that Counselor Littman has joined the meeting at this point. Thank you. So now we have citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the point in the meeting where anyone who has joined us tonight is free to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. There'll be a place later to discuss items that are on tonight's agenda, but we're going to start with not on the agenda. Representative St. Clair.
Charlie.
The Honorable.
Right. And this, if this is on the agenda, just correct me, because I didn't have a chance to look at it, so I apologize.
What's the subject?
You could stop me. Our roads, our city roads and the parking spots on, in Lakeport Square?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Lakeport Square, I read in the paper, you guys, I think you already discussed it here, maybe at a council or at a meeting, there's a thought about taking those, those spaces out again, the wide.
That is on, I thought you meant roads in general.
Oh, no, that's, that's on the, so I'll wait on that one.
That is on the agenda.
So now I'll go on roads on general. Thank you. I've said this before, and I, I get the asphalt thing. I know it's cheaper than concrete, but I would, with what's been going on everywhere, including Mesa Street Bridge, which wasn't repaired that long ago and is already crumbling, I would encourage, boy, that thing is loud, I would encourage the city council or Public Works or somebody to maybe take a chance and take maybe a quarter of a mile or even less of one of the roads that are going to be repaired, possibly on Court Street, and put in the old-fashioned way of a steel frame and concrete on it, concrete, and just see how it goes, see how it lasts, do it like a test strip. And, and, and you can prove me to be the biggest idiot in the city or the state, and it crumbles in a year, but I don't think so. I think as I travel around the country and see what other places are doing with concrete and how long it lasts, I think it's, it's worth, it's worth a try. That, that's all I want to say about that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Well, okay, we'll move on. We have no interviews tonight, but we do have appointments to make relative to interviews we did at our last meeting. First up on the agenda is Aaron Bassett. He is seeking appointment to a regular member position on the Library Board of Trustees with a three-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone on the council care to place Mr. Bassett's name in nomination? Motion made by Counselor Haynes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowns. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Aaron Bassett to the Library Board of Trustees, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Bruce Canore. He is seeking appointment as an alternate member position on the Library Board of Trustees for a one-year term expiring at the end of March of next year. Would someone care to place Mr. Canore's name in nomination? Counselor Littman does that. Is there a second? Counselor?
Hamel.
Hamel. I need cue cards. Where are they? Thank you, thank you. Maybe we should all do that. I should turn my own around, too. All right. Seconded by Counselor Hamel. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is staying on the library front. James Ole Anderson is seeking reappointment to a regular member position on the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term expiring in March two thousand twenty-one. Would someone care to place Mr. Anderson's name in nomination? Henry Littman, Counselor Littman does that. A second by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that appointment is also confirmed. Okay, next up is still on the library front. Kimberly Denasi seeking reappointment to a regular member position on the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term expiring in March two thousand twenty-one. Can we have a motion to put Mrs. Denasi's name in nomination, please? Counselor Bowns makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Cheney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that nomination is confirmed. Switching to the Heritage Commission. Catherine Tokars is seeking reappointment to be an alternate member of the Heritage Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone care, please, to make, put her name in nomination? Counselor Haynes, is there a second? Counselor Hamel, second to the motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, and she is confirmed. Next up is Deanna Guyer. She is seeking reappointment to a regular member position on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone care to place her name in nomination? Counselor Hamel, is there a second? Counselor Bowns, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that nomination is confirmed also. I always struggle with this name. Guy Petrazzani is seeking reappointment to a regular member position also on the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand twenty-one. That nomination is made by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion is also approved. And lastly, on the appointment front, we have Richard Landry seeking reappointment to a regular member position on the Putnam Fund Board for a five-year term expiring at the end of March two thousand and twenty-three. Counselor Littman makes that motion. Counselor Bowns seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Landry's appointment, please raise a hand. With five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, public hearings. I'll call your attention to page twenty-three in your packet. And the first public hearing is on the matter to authorize the city manager to accept and expend multiple grants on behalf, can I have this in order? Yes. On behalf of the city in the amounts of one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars for surveillance equipment, eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars for two-way radios, ten thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars for door access upgrades, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for hardware upgrades for access control systems, eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars for security glass film, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for doors and door hardware lock sets, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for security panic buttons, fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars for LHS surveillance cameras, and nine thousand, I'm sorry, and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for Laconia Middle School surveillance cameras. These are all relative to RSA one ninety-five fifteen Y, paragraph three, in regards to the public school infrastructure proposals. Notice of this public hearing was made in the February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Community Center, at the Public Library, and the SAU Office. We'll note that these grants have a local share match of twenty percent. And I will declare the, the public hearing open at fourteen minutes past seven and ask if anyone would like to address the council regarding the acceptance of these federal grants. Counselor Littman?
Mayor, just the, the reference, I think, was RSA one ninety-eight, not one ninety-five.
Sorry, one ninety-eight. Yes. Anyone wish to?
We need to do nine individual open and closing of public hearings referencing the nine items.
Can we have a motion to waive the rule?
I wish, I wish we could, but on a public hearing.
Separate hearings on each of them?
On public hearings, we need to open and close each one individually, so that way people can speak to.
Superintendent Menahan, I suggest you get under your chair.
Let's get on with it.
So.
So under the proposed motion, you would open?
First public hearing is on resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero-two for one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars for surveillance equipment. I will declare this hearing open to the public. Anyone wish to comment on receiving that grant? One, I will call, I will declare the, the public hearing closed at seven fifteen PM and move on to the next one. We need to have a public hearing on, you have the background on this, resolution two thousand eighteen dash three, to accept a grant for eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars for two-way radios. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on the matter of accepting a grant for two-way radios? Okay, we're going to open that hearing then at fifteen after and close it at sixteen after. Fudging on the time. Okay, next, we have the public hearing on resolution two thousand eighteen dash four for ten thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars for door access upgrades. Anyone wish to address the council on the matter of accepting a grant for door access upgrades? None, so we'll open and close that hearing at sixteen minutes past seven. Next up is resolution twenty eighteen dash zero-five for fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for hardware upgrades for access control systems for the schools. Anyone wish to address the council on accepting that grant? So I will declare both the opening and closing of that hearing to be at seven seventeen PM. Next up is resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero-six for eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars for security glass film. Anyone interested in addressing the council on that particular appropriation or on that particular grant? None, and I will also declare that hearing to be open and closed at six seventeen PM. Next, we have resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero-seven for one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for doors and door hardware lock sets. Anyone interested in addressing the council on the matter of doors and door hardware locks for the schools? Well, I will declare that hearing both open and close at six eighteen PM. Next up is resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero-eight for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for security panic buttons for the schools. Anyone wish to address the issue of security pa, a grant for security panic buttons? No, I will also declare that public hearing to be open and closed at six eighteen PM.
Seven eighteen.
Eight, yeah, PM. What did I say?
Seven.
Seven, seven eighteen. All right, six eighteen.
Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen, I'm sorry. PM, thank you. Resolution two thousand.
You're home an hour early.
I'm on central time tonight. It's six o'clock somewhere. Resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero-nine for fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for Laconia High School surveillance cameras. Anyone wish to address the council on a matter concerning a grant for LHS surveillance cameras? Okay, I'll declare that public hearing open and closed at seven nineteen PM. Lastly, resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten for thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for Laconia Middle School surveillance cameras. Anyone wish to address the council on the matter of surveillance cameras for the middle school? None, I'll also declare that public hearing to have opened and closed at seven nineteen PM. Thank you. And we'll note for the record that we will be voting to accept these grants later in the meeting. Okay, next up is a public hearing on resolution two thousand eighteen dash eleven relative to a supplemental appropriation. The Laconia School District has been awarded multiple grants totaling four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars for security and safety infrastructure improvements. So we're going to have a public hearing tonight on accepting a supplemental appropriation in that amount for the Laconia School Districts in lieu of receiving these grants. Notice of this public hearing was made in the February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, the Laconia City. It was also posted at City Hall, at the Community Center, at the Public Library, and at the SAU Office. These funds are to be used for one-time expenditures for security and safety projects at various schools. The amount of the supplemental appropriation is four hundred and forty, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, and there is a required match from the district of twenty percent or one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty cents, of which said funds are already appropriated in the current fiscal year, so there is no new fiscal impact. So I will open the public hearing on this matter at twenty-one minutes past seven and ask if there is anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on the matter of approving a supplemental appropriation for this fiscal year for the Laconia School District in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. No one? What time did I say we did this?
Twenty-one, seven twenty-one.
Twenty-one, all right. So I will declare the public hearing closed at seven twenty-two PM, and note again for the record that we will also be voting on this matter later in this meeting. Okay, call the council's attention to page twenty-six. We have one more public hearing to conduct. This is public hearing on resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve relative to unanticipated revenue in regards to the city receiving donations to use towards the restoration of the Native American statue at Opichi Park. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Community Center, the Public Library, and the SAU Office. The amount of unanticipated revenue under this resolution is eight hundred and forty dollars. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on accepting eight hundred and forty dollars in unanticipated revenue that would be put toward any effort to restore the Native American statue at Opichi Park? Okay, I'm going to declare this public hearing to have opened and closed at seven twenty-three PM, and this matter will also be voted on later on tonight's agenda. Okay, no presentations tonight. Next up is mayor's report, and under mayor's report, I have some appointments to make here. The Laconia Human Rights Committee was founded seventeen or eighteen years ago on the understanding that the, the mayor would make annual appointments to the people who were on that committee, and so we're trying to get back on schedule here. That wasn't done for a number of years, and this does not, this does not require, this is a mayor's committee legally, does not require approval of the city council, so I'm just reading in tonight for the record the people that I am appointing to a one-year term on the Human Relations Committee, and that list includes Police Chief Matt Canfield, Carol Pierce, Kate Rusikova, David Osman, Janet Simmons, Leonard Campbell, Carrie Chandler, Mary Jane Howey, the Reverend Judith E. Wright, David Stamps, Ali Hassan, former Police Chief Chris Adams, Kathy James, and Becky Guyer. So those are the names, and I think, do you have those names? I'll pass this down to you if you want. Pass that down to the council, please. Oh, wait a minute, I need that for half a second. Second appointments I need to make tonight, and this does approve, need approval by council, but, and this has to do with members of the Highway Safety Committee, so I am giving notice to the city council that my intention is to reappoint Counselor Henry Littman to that committee, representing the medical professional field, and to appoint Chad Valancourt, reappoint Chad Valancourt, representing the fire department. So if there is no objection to, on the part of anyone on the council to making those two appointments, that is done, and we'll pass this on.
I have it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? No? Liaison reports. Anybody have a liaison report? Counselor Bowns?
I'll bring you up to date. We had the last meeting, well, maybe not the last meeting, but the steering committee for the master plan. You were in attendance, Henry was in attendance. We went over some non-substantive changes. I think that will be coming before the planning board for scheduling a public hearing, first Tuesday in March, and we'll have the public hearing, or maybe we're going to have the public hearing, that's right, we've already sent this out, we didn't make any substantive changes. So we'll have a public hearing on the land use chapter and the vision statement, and be looking to adopt those either at the March meeting or at the April meeting on the planning board.
Thank you. And I would just add on a personal note that the, the, as the counselor said, Counselor Littman, Counselor Bowns, and myself were the three representatives from this table that participated in that committee's work, which started last, late last summer, and I was, I was most impressed by the process and the product, and unfortunately, I had to take a four-month-long break from the proceedings, but knew pretty well where things stood when I left and, and was very happy with the polishing work that was done on, by the committee in my absence. And in the end, the committee of six or seven, seven, I think, people came together and approved it unanimously, and I would encourage the public, and I guess this is going back to the mayor's report, to pay attention to this process. There are substantive changes to the way we do business as a city and have done business for a long time, being proposed in this master plan, and the land use chapter of the master plan is the foundation for zoning and changes to the zoning ordinance. So I would, I would encourage counselors and the public at large to acquaint themselves, get involved at the conversation if they want to, but it really represents a significant change of direction, I think, for the city, and we really need to vet that and have a good conversation about it. So thank you both for your participation in that committee, especially.
Well, I just want to echo your thoughts. This really is, I won't call it a radical departure, but it is a substantive departure from the land use chapter that we adopted back in two thousand and seven and the vision statement, and it's really, in my view, the, the committee should be thanked and appreciated for the hard work that all of you folks did in coming up.
We had great conversations on that committee. I was most impressed with the input that came from. I was most impressed with the input that came from everybody. We certainly didn't agree on everything, but the conversations were quite interesting. And I think we all listened to each other and turned out to be very, very productive, I think. The actual language is being drafted under a contract we have with the Lake Region Planning Commission. Okay, we're on to city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
I think you may want to do citizen requests on current agenda items prior to jump into mine.
Oh, sorry. Yes, okay. So before we hear from the city manager on the agenda, we need to ask anyone, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on any item that is on tonight's agenda. So Representative St. Clair, if you wish to address the Elm Street, Main Street, or Union Avenue intersection, now is the time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. And I want to say it's the first time I've been before this council. So, welcome. And I look forward to working with the two new members, and it's nice to see the mayor back, too. Oh, that, well, yeah. Lakeport Square, it seems to me a while ago, this was, there was a discussion about eliminating some parking spaces there because traffic tends to bind up a little bit during certain times of the day. And they're absolutely right, it does. Rush hour. That's why we call it rush hour. I don't have a business there, but there are businesses there. And I would think that it would be a poor judgment of the city to take away those parking spaces and negatively affect any business that locates in those buildings there. I know there are businesses that have come and gone, there's a couple for sale there. But I think the cost of taking away those parking spaces is just not worth it. If you wanted to, really wanted to improve the intersection there, you could put in a new set of traffic lights that worked twenty-four hours a day, like they used to.
Put what?
Put in a new set of traffic lights or get the ones that are there. I know they get tuned up all the time, but they still, at nighttime especially. But in any event, I just think it would be really bad to take those parking spots away. I think we've, those parking spaces were there when US Three, there was no bypass. Some of you remember that. Everybody came up Route Three all the way north to McIntyre Circle and then left on the Boulevard to get to the White Mountains. So we had a lot more traffic back then, and those parking spaces were there. So I see no reason to take those out. I think it would be a bad move. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I want to comment, because this is my ward. And I, and we got a petition today signed by a number of people saying, don't take away those parking spaces. But I just want everybody to stop for a minute and try to think outside the box on this because it really does create a problem in terms of jamming up down there, not only during rush hour, but at other times, too. So I want to see if there's a solution where we can designate some of the parking places as loading zones or temporary. And if, this is anecdotal experience, but I drive by there a lot. I mean, I live in that neighborhood. So those parking places are not utilized a great deal. They're just not during the daytime, during the nighttime. And one car, one parked car, one or two parked cars can create a real jam there. So I'm just putting that on the table. Those are my constituents that signed that petition today, so I'm going to listen to them in terms of how we do it. But I'm going to at least be asking people, not for a particular vote, one way or the other, but to think outside the box on this and look for a solution that addresses the needs of Sunrise Towers, addresses the needs of the businesses along there, and there are still some that are open right on the corner, and finds a resolution for that whole intersection. So, that's my comment.
I know what you mean, councillor, about when one car parks there. But normally what people do is they go around it and they widen it back up. So I understand that.
When you're backing up and the, and the left-hand turn lane is backed up, you can't get around it. There's no, if, if we didn't have a problem with the left-hand turn lane backing up, we wouldn't have that jam up problem.
It does, it does. And it happens. And that's called traffic in the city. It happens. It's not, I don't expect that, as a resident who uses that intersection more than a dozen times a day, I don't expect that to be an expressway. I know there are times I get there and it's going to be backed up, just like, like coming, going south on there. Somebody wants to make a left turn into the post office, that tends to back up traffic and you, and you might miss the light if you can't get around them. I get that, that's just, it's part of the deal.
Well, I get that that's traffic in the city, but I, I want people to try to get this. It's traffic in the city that's looking for a solution. So that, there you go.
I can't debate that. Thank you very much.
When you, can I ask you a question, please? When you say harming businesses, which businesses are you talking about?
Well, there's, there's, you've got a, there's two businesses right there. Actually, there's one that's used as, I think, for recovery people. They have a place right there that's open sometimes, sometimes not. And they have a business right to the left of it. I got to tell you, your honor, I do not know what's in that business, but I see people going in and out of it. I know that the gentleman that bought that building has hopes of sometime expanding other things in there. And then you've got the, the old Five and Dime store there that's empty and for sale. But I, I would think, I don't know if they'll ever sell it, I don't even know what they're asking for, but if-
You're talking about businesses on the other side of the street?
I don't know, I'm talking about on the right side of the street.
He's not talking about the-
By the park?
I mean, the Five and Dime is on the other side of the street.
That's the side I'm talking about.
That's the side we're talking about.
I don't think they're looking to take anything on that side.
No, you're talking about the park side, aren't you not?
They're looking to take on a park side.
I'm talking about-
On the park side.
He's talking about the building that, that most recently, for about a month, had a restaurant in it?
Actually, it was one day, so.
Gillies or Gillies or something like that?
Yeah, that's the one.
So that, so you're not taking those spots, but you're going to take them on the other side. So I would still be in opposition to that because, again, parking is tough up there, so.
My comments are directly only to the parking spots on the right-hand side of Union Avenue as you're going north.
Okay, then that would be the one in front of those buildings.
We're not talking about eliminating the ones on the other side of the street.
The other side of the street, there's a proposal to move the sidewalk to accommodate.
Yes.
That's what that does, but that's not what I'm talking about.
So, Myers.
Is everybody confused? Thank you very much.
I'm just, I'm, I'm saying, don't touch any parking spots, but that's okay, so, all right.
So when the presentation was made at the last meeting, our Public Works Director talked about making the combination straight through right turn, the current right turn lane from Union Ave onto Elm Street be a mixed use. So cars should go straight and they could make right turns as they're traveling southbound, I guess it is, on Union Ave. And that was going to cause the need to eliminate roughly, I think it's six parking spaces adjacent to the park and moving the sidewalk. Councilor Bounds was unable to attend the last meeting, and in following up, he had a conversation with the Public Works Director. And learning that the parking spaces across the street in front of the Opera House and the Five and Dime, as we're referring to it, would be narrowed to eight feet and they're a pinch point anyway. And then in winter time, when there's snow on the curbing, make them even narrower. He had asked that we could include in discussion a fourth map or a fourth page, I think it is in your packet tonight, that also would take a look at eliminating the spaces on that side of the street as well. So the council consensus minus Councilor Bounds being absent, but after the fact, there's the same map showing the right and straight turn.
There are a lot more spaces on that side of the street.
Yes, and that would be, working with the engineers, looked at it, I think that's eleven spaces that we're talking about there. So it could be any-
So it's in play theoretically.
It could be any combination, but tonight you're, you're looking to get information. So all things are on the table, but I don't believe you're making any decisions tonight.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. Hi, actually, I'm, my name is Tony DeGiso. I'm the owner of Mustache Pete's Barbershop. I'm business on that side of the road where the parking is being taken.
You're the owner of what, sir?
It's called Mustache Pete's Barbershop at seven forty-four Union Ave. I do have customers that use that parking space, more than a dozen a day, use parking up and down there. I'd like to say Lakeport wasn't always just a place to go through. The big building had businesses, it had a post office, it had a pharmacy, the Five and Dime. It was actually a place to stop. I believe Ms. Blizzard, the, I'm sorry, the marina recently bought the fire station, which is going to take away a lot of parking from Lakeport. I just think that Lakeport needs parking, it's part of our identity. Being a business owner, I really need that. People park there all day long, and if you take that, that'll push the parking up more, which will affect my business. I'm doing well. It's before me, I know there's a lot of kind of ragtag places in, but I just, I could really use those parking spots.
Do you have any off-street, off-street parking?
I have none.
None, none at all?
No, one.
And which, which side of the street are you on?
I'm on the side of the street that the parking is on.
Okay.
Yours, when I asked Representative St. Clair that question, yours was the only business I could think of that was-
Yes.
In front of, the rest of them are residential buildings, I think.
You're correct.
I think the spaces on that side, if I can, Mr. Mayor, run up to that one apartment building and stop. I think it's the half a dozen spaces there, the space that would start in, in front of Mustache Pete's. And there's might one or two more after that.
I believe there's eight spots on my side of the road. I know on the paper it said two hundred feet. I kind of estimated, take three or four out of the eight, I think.
So I think the first six coming up to the driveway for the apartment building, if you look at your information in the packet, would be slated to be removed. And the one in front of Mustache Pete's and the one that's after that were not slated to be changed. But he's correct, there would be six spaces, just a little-
Say that again now? There's eight spaces total?
Eight spaces on my side of the road.
There are, only six we're proposing to eliminate if we did that turn lane. And those six basically run from the intersection, not right at the intersection, but from the intersection up to just before the driveway of that olive green apartment building.
Yeah, on the corner, right next to the park.
And then I think there's a couple of curb cuts, and the next parking space is directly in front of this gentleman's business, which we're not talking about removing. And there's one space after that as well, which, again, we're not talking about removing. But it is, the first six spaces would be removed if we went to that dual turn.
First six spaces south of the intersection?
Yes.
And there's also two-hour parking, but that's not enforced. So there's cars that park kind of up all day long that would take up spots. That's just another thing that would kind of mess, kind of mess with my business whatsoever.
Very true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Hello, I'm Dick Allen. Some of you know me. No one knows Lakeport better than I do. I've been, I have had property there for over forty years, and I know all about parking. And I'll tell you, even if one car didn't come up through Union Avenue and get stuck in Lakeport, there still wouldn't be enough parking places just for the tenants alone. Now, most of the parking was taken away when they put the center line in, and I was all for that because before that it was, there was junk cars all over the place. Maybe some of you remember it, I sure do. I lived on seven sixteen Union Avenue for thirteen years. And I knew that one of the largest problems, biggest problems in Lakeport would be most of those lots were sixty feet wide. And if you tried to run a business, never mind live there, it was very difficult because there was actually no parking at that time either, not even for the tenants. And that's what you've run into now. So when you first came, I don't know how many years ago that was, that it was changed, there was no parking on Union Avenue except for the, right down there by the lights. And they kept that because there were some businesses, and I understand that. But it seems to me that in, in the fifteen units, there's fifteen different places that we bought in the last forty years. I've got a map here of those places. There's fifteen lots. Five of them were the Lakeport Plaza that I put together, and they have forty-car parking. And no city came and gave me any parking. I had to have my own. And since that time, I've taken down several other buildings for parking. So that's what has to be done. And now you're talking about taking the parking away from the square. I'm all for that because I have my parking. But is it up to the city to keep giving parking away to someone who has apartment buildings? You don't require them to have parking for their own tenants? We've got a rooming house that's just from the corner. There's ten rooms in it they rent. And those tenants who rent that come to me, or don't come to me, they park in my parking. And I kick them out, this week, another one. And the landlord just says, well, we don't have parking, but you can park up the road. There's no parking up the road. So we're running into that also. A lot of the times, like he has his, his barber shop, there's tenants that take those parking places because they don't have any. There's seven units on the corner.
Of the Green Building.
Not just the Green Building, it's the rooming house also.
One of the rooming houses.
Sure, you've got that same problem, even if you take, whether you take the parking away or whether you leave it there, there's a real problem. If you restrict it to just commercial units, you may have some relief. But there's never enough parking in Lakeport, and they won't be. Even if you take all of the parking away or whether you leave it there, we still have a problem. I know, my buildings are there. I know what we run into every day, and in the wintertime, it's even worse. Because now you've got snowbanks and you've got, trying to get into the parking that we manage, one of the, we manage that end building, by the way, at seven fifty-six, is it seven fifty-six Union Ave. We've been managing it for about five years.
The Green Building?
The Green Building. And, and if you drive into that parking area, you don't get out till spring. I mean, this is the worst parking that we have ever had, but what else can we do? It takes about seven cars at most, is it right, somewhere around seven cars?
Well, there is a parking lot for that building.
There's a parking lot, but not enough. I mean, well, there's seven parking places and seven units, and so you don't count the bedrooms, which code is supposed to be. But the real problem is when they allow someone who has a rooming house with no parking. That's a big problem. So my question is, if you take all the parking away, and I'm for it, if you take it away, then you need to buy one building and make it municipal parking if you're going to do it for the businesses, not the apartments I'm talking about. Because I feel that I paid the price for my parking for my tenants. And it was not done by the city.
Well, I think you've hit on the central issue here, is if you own a building that doesn't have any parking, whose responsibility is that? Is that your responsibility or a missed responsibility?
Correct, that's what I'm saying. And I feel the same, I feel the same way about downtown. If there is commercial buildings and that you knew that need some parking for, and that's fine. But what about the rental properties that are above that, which they should be really supplying their own parking? It isn't up to the city. You're not going to, you're not going to build me a parking garage in Lakeport. It'd be nice if you want to, but I don't think you're going to. And then you look to say, well, where could you put parking up there? Well, you know something, I don't know how you people feel about, but that white elephant is a white elephant. And you might think it's a landmark, but I think it's a mark on the land. And it sits there year after year after year, and no one does hardly anything to that building.
You're talking about the building right on the corner?
Yeah.
Yes, right next to the Fatales, across the street from Fatales. That just sits there forever, and it looks like a junkyard most times in the back, in the rear. No one does anything, and it, and it went for almost no money at all. And it still sits there. And that's the, that's one of the problems, it could be solved.
Used to be a nice little theater in there.
How old are you?
That's an indiscreet question, question.
I'm not telling.
Well, you get my point. Even the Five and Dime, who they did put a lot of money into that, it just doesn't, it's been empty for a long time. And, and I'm afraid that's what's going to happen anyway. Even if you take the parking away or you leave the parking there, there's not enough. There's just not enough. And a lot of times, what I see is happening is for buildings that you might rent a room, I rent rooms too, but I give parking. You don't get the tenant that's going to, that even has an automobile, it should be on the road sometimes, as the truth of it is. And, and some of them park there all day, no one reinforces anything, so it is a mess.
Well, that's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, well, you can say that, but what's the solution to it, is what I'm saying. What else do you do? So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to address the city council tonight on, on any matter that is on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll be taking up this matter tonight, the parking matter under new business. All right, now you're up, city manager, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off by reminding everyone that we have a special election tomorrow to fill a House of Representatives seat. So six polling locations are open from seven in the morning until seven at night. So if you are so inclined, please come out and visit your poll workers and vote tomorrow. Included in your packet for the first, sorry, the second meeting of the month, we have the Laconia Projects update, starting off on some road projects. So we had the road presentation by our Public Works Director Wes Anderson and our consultant a couple of weeks ago. We've identified key projects. We had a very good meeting on, last Thursday night over at the mill, on the Core Street project, which is slated to begin somewhere around the first of April, weather-dependent. We had the best turnout- We had, uh, um, the best turnout I've seen for a pre-construction type of meeting for a road project, um, represented by a number of the key businesses, uh, on that street. And Councilor Haynes, who's awarded, uh, is, was in attendance as well. We had, um, our engineers, we had, uh, Paul Busby from Busby Construction. Water Department was there, so we had, uh, all the appropriate construction team there as well. So, um, we do have information available on that that we put out to people in a PowerPoint handout. Um, and Public Works will be, uh, having information available for updates on the city website, very easy to find, so that people wanna, you know, get a snapshot of when we're starting, what's happening dur-, uh, during certain times of the project, when there might be detours. There'll be information up there as well. Other projects that we're working on, uh, including the Winnipesaukee River Basin project, uh, we continue to struggle with some of the data that we received from the, um, from the metering, the flow metering on that. Um, so we're working through some of those issues. There was a piece of legislation going through that really had minimal impact on a number of communities, but it did impact the Winnipesaukee River Basin program communities in that, uh, it was changing that any fines that were imposed for violations of users of the system, uh, those fines would be going into the general fund of the state and not staying into an account for the program. And the local communities, ours included, reached out to the, uh, to the senators on the committee and then to the full senate for a vote, and, uh, suggested to them since that those are all local property tax dollars or user dollars that are paying for the program, that it was not appropriate to have any fines that are levied go into the state general fund. Uh, unfortunately, that did not get any traction with the senate, so that language remains in place right now, but that bill will be crossing over and going to the house. So we will certainly be reaching out to members of the house to see if that bill can be amended just to, we don't have a problem with the bill, and it's, most of the bill, just that one line that talks about those fines not staying within the program for reinvestment, but going to the state general fund.
How much money is that?
It's not a lot of money right now, but it, who knows in the future that it could be. So it's one of those things that is a, again, it's self-supporting by the member communities. There are no state dollars, even though the Department of Environmental Services administers the program on behalf of the member communities. All of the salaries and their administrative costs are paid for by the member community. So it's more of a principle on the matter. It's not a huge financial hit at the moment, but we're looking somewhere down the line where, um, where it truly could be. Uh, we've gone out to, uh, bid on a couple of projects that we expect to be occurring this spring on the Downtown Riverwalk. Um, we're hoping for spring construction on the section, uh, towards Rose Court, down behind the Walgreens. We'll be doing the section out the backside of City Hall, down to Church Street this fall in conjunction with the drawdown of the river, because we've got some areas of work down by the Pearly Canal and down where you come into the Church Street area. We've also awarded the bid for the resurfacing of Sanborn Park, uh, Basketball Court and the Tardif Park Basketball Tennis Court. Uh, that's been awarded, and we're on target for hopefully a May, um, resurfacing of those. And we're currently looking to go out to, uh, um, the design completed for some of the drainage projects the council approved at Bartlett Beach and Bond Beach, some of the erosion areas over there. So we're looking to have final design, um, completed there in March, and then go out to permit and get that work completed, hopefully somewhere this season as well. Um, so road, uh, road projects are at the forefront. Again, Pleasant Street is another project that I know, um, road project that, uh, we've heard a lot of concern over the condition of that road with the frost heaves going on. That's a major project that we'll be undertaking as school wraps up, um, for the summer season. So somewhere towards the latter part of June, and, uh, working on that project while school is out of session, and hopefully trying to minimize the impact, um, over there. Couple of pieces of leg-, additional pieces of legislation that I shared with the council. Uh, one councillor, Lippman, brought to my attention and asked for some additional information. It deals with the exciting topic of utility valuations. Uh, but this is something that ties into some of the lawsuits that are going on in the state right now on valuations. It's gone back for years on, uh, what they would refer to as the poll tax, where Eversource was paying property tax on their poles and conduits in the municipal right-of-way. Uh, but for whatever reason, the communication companies always got a special exemption. So I'm thinking their lobbyists maybe worked a little harder or did something a little bit better. But there was always the poll exemption, and we've worked for years to finally have those taxed appropriately. Fairpoint, which has now been sold, and I'm drawing a blank on the new parent company there, but, um, has tied up a number of municipalities, many, many dozens of municipalities in litigation over utility valuations. Uh, so it's something I'm still working through the legislature. There were two bills, um, that were submitted that both dealt with the same issue and both went to the Science and Technology and Energy Committees. And one of them, um, was gonna create a study commission to really put some equity to how municipalities were valuing for, for tax assessment purposes, uh, utility infrastructure. And I agree, across the state, if you looked at what one community might have been assessing a pole or conduit versus another community, there were literally differences of hundreds, if not over a thousand dollars. And I agree, that's too wide of a range for those types of things. What the study commission was gonna do was to come through and work through some consistent methodology that could be implemented across the state and have everybody on equal footing. Now, some land values within communities may vary a little bit depending on where land values are, but you would figure the value of a pole, conduit, those types of infrastructures should more or less be apples and apples across the state. That was something that was supported by a number of people. Utilities in particular wanted to go a different route, and there was a parallel piece of legislation that went in that actually got some traction. So both bills came out of Science, Technology and Energy and went over to Ways and Means for kind of the fiscal impact and the look at it on that end. And rather than going with the study committee recommendation, Ways and Means came up with a very quick amendment to a bill, created their own valuation method in a matter of hours. It wasn't there on a Tuesday night, and all of a sudden, it appeared as an amendment in committee on Wednesday. And the committee approved this valuation method, um, pretty, pretty overwhelmingly. So it's going to the full-house floor somewhere in the first full week of March, March 6th or March 7th. So you may ask, "What's the downside to this having a formula in place?" Well, the formula in place, um, looks at cost basis on some of the items. So if a utility bought up land acreage a hundred years ago for right-of-way and running, uh, poles and running wires, that's the cost basis for their land versus adjacent land right next door to it could be assessed at fifty thousand dollars an acre, and maybe the land on a cost basis a hundred years ago, and it might have been fifty years ago, but probably was a whole lot less expensive than that. Another piece of the amendment says that a municipality shall not assess a utility at a rate higher than what the utility declares it on its own book value. So the utilities might go in and build infrastructure, which could include transmission lines, could include generating facilities. And if they look to depreciate it off of their books over a period of, and again, I don't know all the numbers, but typically a twenty or maybe up to a thirty-year period on, depending on the life of the asset. If they write off some of these assets over that time, and they've got a zero-dollar value on the utility books, that would be the new level, high level, that we would be allowed to assess it at. So we think there's a lot of inequities in this piece of legislation. And, um, I sent you, I think, the two ba-, two-page overview from the municipal association's point of view. But this amendment passed to House Bill thirteen, uh, eighty-one, I believe it is. And it's going to the House floor in two weeks, and there's real concern that it's gonna get traction there. So first piece of legislation I would ask you to take a position on tonight, if you're willing to, is to ask our representatives to, uh, be opposing this and, and vote to kill the bill. And I'll stop there before I get into the second one.
I guess the analogy that we could use here is, if you bought your house in nineteen fifty, your tax rate would be based on what you paid in nineteen fifty. If someone built next to you in two thousand eighteen, their tax rate would be based on the value of that day. And it just is incredibly unfair, and it's a, I think, a, a chance of putting Laconia first. This is just very bad for Laconia, and, uh, and, you know, it's gonna basically shift the cost of, um, the poll, the polls and the tax onto the property owners, uh, because the amount to be raised by taxes isn't gonna change. It's gonna be who pays it, and basically, uh, there needs to be equity, as the manager said, but this is very bad policy.
We, we do currently calculate, if I will, and that's a great point, thank you councillor for bringing it up. We do calculate as far as our filing with the Department of Revenue Administration. When we file an MS-1, it's Municipal Services Form Number One, that we filed in conjunction with the tax rate setting. We do separate, separate out utility values, and every community does that. And ours are around thirty-five million dollars. And I'm not trying to say that our thirty-five million dollars would go down to zero. But even if it were to be cut in half due to the depreciation and the cost basis, we're losing eighteen million dollars of value off of our books. And at a tax rate of twenty-one dollars per thousand, potentially, that could be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of taxes that utilities aren't paying, that are now being shifted, the burden's being shifted to all the other taxpayers in the community. The utilities already get a small reduction in the tax rate because the reason we, we calculate out the utility value separately is when we do the tax rate, the utilities do not pay the state education portion of the property tax. All other, uh, properties do, but utilities don't. So they're already, the state portion's about two dollars and something?
Two dollars and thirty cents.
Two dollars and thirty cents maybe on our twenty-one dollars and four cent tax rate. So they're already getting a little over ten percent in rough numbers, you know, reduction by not paying that portion. But, um, you know, losing, losing any portion of thirty-five million dollars in valuation for something that just seems, um, poorly constructed in legislation at the, at the eleventh hour, to me is, is not the sound approach. And I think the study commission, which would have a representative from utilities, as is drafted, it would have a municipal representative, would have two members from the House, one who serves on the Science and Technology Committee, it would have a senate member, it would have a couple of other community members. So it's a, you know, it's a balanced approach to looking at this. And it's actually, the Assessing Standards Board, which is a statewide board that really focuses on that, is also supportive of doing the study commission and, and, um, having this done properly and equitatively for all entities, not just for municipalities, but for utilities as well.
Any questions or comments for the manager at this point?
Yeah.
Councillor Balance?
Does anybody have a sense of how the mechanics of this work? And what I mean by the mechanics is it comes out of committee, inexpedient to legislate. Overnight, it comes with full-blown amendments, um, that pass overwhelmingly by the Ways and Means Committee. Is that, is that, does anybody got a sense of the mechanics of that?
In, in some cases, depending on what the bill is looking, what a, what a bill is looking to do, sometimes it has to go to two committees, whether it's in the House or in the senate. So in this case, the, the Science, Technology and Energy component, the energy tied into the utility portion of it. But if there's the fiscal impact to it, then sometimes it needs to be re-referred to a second committee to look at the fiscal impacts to it. So that's why Science and Technology did that part, but then before, it went to a vote on the House floor with a committee recommendation. It needed to go to Ways and Means, and Ways and Means went in a complete different direction, and not only went the different direction, came up with an amendment and, after the public hearing on it, and took action on it. And so now Ways and Means' recommendation on this particular bill is to, ought to pass as amended. Whereas Science, Technology and Energy was focusing on referring it to the study commission and recommended that one ought to pass. So you've got two bills that both tie to a particular issue, uh, but they're heading in complete opposite directions.
You know, our deleg-, full delegation wasn't able to support us on the, the legislation that came up regarding the pension program. Here's something that doesn't cost the general fund anything, but it's gonna cost individual taxpayers, Laconia property taxes to go up. I hope that we can get full delegation support on this, and we propose-
What's the number, what's the number of that bill?
Well, the, the study commission is House Bill three twenty-four. The one that got amended is House Bill thirteen eighty-one.
And that's the one that's coming up for a vote in two weeks?
That's the one that's, that came out of Ways and Means, and it's gonna be on the House floor either March 6th or March 7th, most likely.
Would a motion be in order at this point?
It's Bill thirteen eighty-one.
Time to authorize the city manager to write a letter to our delegation members? I'm sorry, I'll start again. Would anyone offer a motion at this point in time to authorize the city manager to contact the members of the Laconia delegation, uh, and our senator to, to oppose House Bill thirteen eighty-one as amended?
And I think we ought to put in there that we want to support House Bill three twenty-four. I mean, can we do that? We want to oppose thirteen eighty-one, and we want to support, um, three twenty, House Bill three-
So you make the motion?
Yeah.
All right, so Councillor Balance makes a motion to authorize the city manager to contact our legislative delegation, uh, to express our opposition to House Bill thirteen eighty-one and our support for House Bill three twenty-four. Can we get a second first, and then we'll have your second? Second by Councillor Haynes.
Councillor Lippman. I understand Councillor Balance's intent, but I think what we need is a specific reference to amendment because the other bill that, was it three, whatever it was?
Three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four could be amended in a way that's ugly for us as well. So I think we, if we're gonna be specific about it, we gotta be specific about the version of it just so if the version changes, they don't think that we're supporting it no matter what.
All right, so let, let's do this.
Well, wait a minute.
Instead of writing in the middle of the meeting here, let's, uh, I'll recognize one of you under council comments at the end of the meeting. So if you, if you all could put your heads together in the meantime here and draft the language that you want passed, so we're not doing it on the fly. We'll handle it under council comments.
If I, it won't take a lot of time, I think it's, the version that, that the manager specifically referenced is what we should go on record as opposing, and any, any other, that's it. Not, not to pick another bill because that bill may get amended.
Well, I, I'm not invested. I just thought it was, to support three twenty-four would be a wise thing to do.
So you want to make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor to eliminate any reference to three twenty-four?
Correct.
And the rest is okay?
Yes, I think it's, the manager knows which version it is, and just make sure that's referenced in his communication.
All right, so Councillor Lippman makes a motion to eliminate the language in the motion proposed to eliminate reference to House Bill three twenty-four and refer only to House Bill thirteen eighty-one. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Councillor Balance seconds the motion. We're, all right, we're voting on the amendment now.
You can bow by the horn.
All is in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that carries. All right, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Councillor Hamill?
Yeah, I, I think that we should make the point that we're, um, firmly not in agreement with what they're trying to do, not just, it's not okay. I mean, to pass on to them that, uh, add more possible taxes to any town, any city for doing this, along with them voting down the pension, like Henry said, by one vote. You know, that's six hundred thousand dollars the city lost. So just keep passing the buck from over there to here is not right. You know, they're, they're doing their citizens no favors.
Any further discussion? Councillor Cheney?
Mayor, I, I have some experience with the House and the senate and crazy laws, uh, or bills. And my experience has been that the place to deal with most of these things is in the senate, to be perfectly frank, because the House is so big, and, and committees like Ways and Means have so much power over the population of the House that you need to get to the senate. So I would encourage the, the manager and the mayor to be sure to, to talk to our senator.
Yes.
I think frankly, all of us ought to-
I think in the, in the motion, it says our delegation, and I intended that to mean our senator as well as our representatives.
On this particular one right now, if it can get killed in the House, then the senate won't even see it. But certainly, point, point taken, if it gets over the senate, the, the message still stands.
Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that carries. Any other questions or comments for the manager at this point?
So I've got one more piece of legislation that I also sent you this morning.
Let me back up half a second here, that changed subjects. In your status report, or project update report, uh, it notes that the last two meetings of the Tiff District, Downtown Tiff District, have been canceled for lack of a quorum. And I'm wondering, um, if we should be looking at changing the makeup of that board if we can't get a quorum.
I will pull out the specific names and share them, uh, I mean, I, I'm thinking of three or four of the names off the top of my head.
Just because there are people in Florida for the winter, or what?
I think there's one who is in Florida for a few months. I think there was one who was traveling for business purposes, but travels quite a bit this year, this time of year.
So there's five on the committee?
Yes.
And they have to have three?
Yes.
So we've had less than three, two week, two meetings in a row?
Yes. I will, I'll pull up the specifics to that and share them with you.
If you could give us an update on that, you can just email us and let us know what the status of that is.
The second- The second bill that I brought to your attention this morning was House Bill sixteen seventy-three, and this deals with the statute that requires municipalities to charge a certain percentage on overdue property tax bills. So when a, if a property tax bill is overdue, in the first year, under state law, municipalities are required to charge twelve percent interest on that. After a first year of overdue, there's a lien goes against the property, and in years two and three of that particular past due amount, the interest rate in, in state law is at eighteen percent. We find, most municipalities find an overwhelming number of bills get paid within that first year because the interest rate is going to jump from twelve to eighteen. In some cases, certainly there are hardship cases where people don't have the means to pay, I understand that. In other cases, sometimes people are foregoing paying local property taxes because they've got higher interest rates possibly on credit cards or other personal loans or whatever it might be. The problem with municipalities not collecting taxes in a timely manner can mean that there's cash flow issues. In some cases, smaller communities in particular might have to go out and issue tax anticipation notes for short-term borrowing. You'll see the county does that sometimes, which adds to the expense. Or if your, if your fund balance isn't where you think it's going to be, you lose the income on the interest that you would earn. So it hurts communities. House Bill sixteen seventy-three actually got through the House on Thursday with a last-minute amendment, so this one is going to the Senate. And it basically reduced the amount that a municipality can charge for overdue property taxes to what the Department of Revenue Administration charges overdue business taxes. And there's three components of what the DRA charges. I don't recall the three names off the top of my head, but the legislation only spoke to the first piece, which was six percent. So what the House has already passed is municipalities will now only be able to charge six percent interest on overdue property taxes. And for all the reasons that I just outlined, and sometimes twelve percent isn't strong enough, at a six percent rate, there'll be a lot of people who may be not putting the city towards the front of their payment schedules and choosing to pay off other things, and it runs into a real cash flow issue for cities across the state. So this has passed the House in some forms in the past. It has never gotten through the Senate. I'm hopeful this time that the same thing will happen, but it did pass the House the other day at a eleventh-hour surprise.
Counsel Lippman?
Again, I think, you know, from an individual standpoint, a lower interest rate is, is a favorable thing, but to everybody who has to cover that float, it means everybody's going to pay a bit more in taxes as a result of that. So, you know, balancing the incentives, again, this is making municipal operations more expensive for taxpayers in general and not a good thing, and hopefully we can stop in the Senate.
Should, should with the agreement of the council ask the city manager to forward a, a letter to our Senate representatives to ask them not to vote for this?
Do we have a number on that?
This is House Bill sixteen seventy-three. Yes, it's House Bill sixteen seventy-three, passed the House, and it's in the Senate now, probably getting ready to be assigned to a committee, and that hasn't happened yet.
All right. So Counsel Hamel makes a motion to authorize the city manager to contact our legislative delegation, including our state senator, to express the reasoning behind our opposition to House Bill sixteen seventy-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Cheney seconds the motion. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Discussion, I guess, you know, it seems like we're, got a string of, of things that haven't been favorable for the community here. You know, in the past years, we've brought the delegation in to have a discussion about what's coming forward here, so it may, may be worth the crossover to, to do the same thing as we've done in the past, since there's so many bills of interest to us that basically are putting pressure on us financially.
We can look to arrange that to happen.
So you're suggesting at the next meeting, we invite...
March twenty-second is, I think, the crossover date for the session, so...
Second meeting of March, then, maybe invite the delegation to...
Probably by that time, the bills will be assigned to committees.
Yep.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries.
That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counsel Hamel?
Yes, a couple of questions for the city manager or, or comments here from me. We'll, we'll be starting our construction season within a month or two. And Court Street will be a major project, I believe takes three phases west. So what I was suggesting is that I'd like to see someone from the city, and I brought this up before, be on site, watching the contractor, what they're doing below ground, above ground. Once they bury it, we don't know what they did. I think it's very important to have somebody there. I'm not saying that the contractors don't do a good job, but when you have someone watching, they may do a better job.
We agree with you, and this is a very involved project, and we do have a dedicated person on this project.
Okay. Great. Because, you know, I brought up some things about the weirs, I showed some pictures of some things. They've gone out and checked them, and the comment I had is that those structures just barely passed. I don't think we paid our contractors with just barely passed money. They get the full boat. So I think it's very important that we have someone on site, even through the paving. We don't know, when we ask for two inches, we don't know if we're getting two and a half, they get paid by the ton. So we have no clue what they're putting down.
You don't know how hot it is, which is critical.
Exactly.
Has this not been a practice in the past?
On, on larger projects, more so, but sometimes on smaller, where we're doing pockets of roads around the city, there's not necessarily a full-time inspector sitting there. We do go out and inspect at various times, at various points in the project, but it's not someone's full-time job. On Court Street, there'll be a full-time dedicated person because of the complexity of this project.
And also, over the years, you know, I, I don't know the, how technology has, has advanced, but you see no more grade stakes. You don't know what the pitch of the road is, it's all done in the tractor, but when we go out, there's no way of really checking, you know? So I don't know why they did away with the grade stakes. To me, though, they're very important. On, on some of our new roads we just did, the water's puddling on the right-hand sides of the road, just sits there. So doesn't even go to the catch basin.
Where is that?
Down in front of the Taylor Home and down through there, it just puddles. So water that sits there eventually is going to not do well. So we, we need to keep track of, of this. And I'd like to see some kind of a timeframe, I brought it up several times, about the change in the crosswalk lights at Court and Main to a countdown light. So I'd like, I'd like to see a timeframe on that. It's been a couple of years that I've asked for that, so.
So right now, would that be slated to be done with Phase Two of Court Street, the lights?
I think initially, no, we, that'd be done, I think, prior to Phase Two.
Union Ave.
The Union Ave project, which is probably going to tie into the fall of, of next year, yes.
Yeah, next year.
But, but, well, this, this, next fiscal year, this construction season.
Fall of eighteen.
No, actually, no, you were doing the other end of Union Ave on there.
Mr. Anderson?
The, the Union Ave from Main going over Hill Guilford Ave is scheduled for the spring of 2019.
We're starting the other end of Union in fall of eighteen.
I don't know why we had to wait in, over a year to put a light up that counts down. They're all over the place. And no other town seemed to have any problems putting them up, but we seem to.
Counsel, we've certainly, I don't think this has been going on for a couple of years. I think this just specifically, probably in the last six or eight months, and then since that time, we also had discussions about doing them at the other intersections, so we could hopefully be more competitive. So I think if you look at the record, I think this came up somewhere, maybe late that last summer in the September timeframe, and we did look to coordinate. And as the Public Works Director pointed out, these are not inexpensive five, ten-thousand-dollar fixes, because we start going to those, we're looking at the tip downs, where the location of the push buttons is, it's bringing everything into ADA compliance. So if we're looking at one, two, three intersections, we might be in the area of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or greater of money that currently is not sitting in the budget. So we're not minimizing it, we're trying to find dollars that we can utilize and work that with existing dollars to do it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
But it's, it's not, it's not inexpensive dollars on these projects.
I understand that. But, you know, I've, I've seen some communities put them in not too far in, in the past, and I didn't see them do anything to the intersection.
So the, the, if, if we, if we put in the 2019, eighteen, seventeen countdown things, we have to change the buttons because they're too high?
If we're making significant improvements to an intersection, we need to come into full compliance with the American with Disability Act. We can't just go in and do one...
And where are we out of compliance?
Some of the, some of the tip downs, some of the heights of the buttons, the countdowns, there's a number of components that need, each intersection has to be modified.
What's a tip down? I don't know what that means.
The little slope down for the wheelchairs.
Oh, the grades are too steep?
It's a different one, sometimes you don't have enough radius to get around in doing it, we're running into that, as you saw with some of the utility poles on the Court Street sidewalks, that we're going to have to do a little mini workarounds or bump outs in order to get the width that we need for ADA compliance with the sidewalk. So there's a number of them, they're not all identical in every intersection, but it's more than just putting up a countdown light.
Counsel Lippman? I know I might talk to you about the one near the tavern, that there's some sight-impaired people, so just need sound as well as numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I guess if we could ask in terms of, for the, the budget as an option for the, coming up, if we could have, at least look at an option, what it would be as an impact and the...
Sure. And we, and we have tried to make upgrades, so with the Busy Corner, I think you're all in agreement that putting the camera there rather than the loop has worked. And then we took the extra step of looking to order the software and the hardware of synchronizing the Guilford Ave light. So that was combined forty thousand, forty to fifty thousand, that we found within existing dollars. Those were never standalone projects. So twenty thousand here, fifty thousand here, you know, I, I think we do the best to try to scrape some resources together to be responsive to these things, but we certainly can put together the package. And one of the thoughts was, let's look to do all of them, and I think the final one, we talked about Lakeport Square, we talked about Messer Street, the only one that, when the director and I had conversations, that we didn't feel warranted, it was probably the Parade Road, Anthony Drive, but is, is that a state one, or is that ours?
That's a state.
That's a state. We, we had one other one of ours I thought we weren't going to. Maybe it was the Messer Street one that we thought?
Messer Street, you're talking about by the Irving Station?
Yeah. Maybe we thought, anyway, we, we looked at a couple of them. We thought Lakeport definitely has, has the need for it, and then Busy Corner, Guilford Ave. So we'd rather utilize the resources, get someone here, get a competitive bid while they're here doing the project, and get it done comprehensively.
Okay. I'd also like the city to look into the sidewalk, the crosswalk at Vista Food. A couple of years ago, there was a person killed there. A couple of years ago, could be more than that now, I don't, but anyway.
There was, there was an accident more recently than that, just months ago.
Yeah. Anyway, I was asking, I'm going to ask the city council, I mean, city, to look into putting similar to what's up at Hospital Crossing on Highland Street?
High and Highland, yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a solar charge, similar to kind of what we have, what we put up at both Messer Street and high school now, but it's got the push button where the lights flicker.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know those probably aren't cheap, but, you know, maybe sometime in the future, we could look to see about something there.
We, we did discuss...
That's a heavily crossed area for seniors.
We, we did look at that, and maybe I'll ask West to come up. I believe that's something that the federal...
We can no longer use the, the flashing beacon that's up by the Elliott Hospital, I mean, it's not Elliott Hospital, Lakes Region General Hospital. They withdrew our, every municipality's authority to use it in the, the country.
Really?
So we, so parallel to that, we did...
Say that again, I didn't catch that.
The, the flashing beacon-controlled one is no longer an approved pedestrian safe area and stuff for use. So the federal government, through the highway or transportation department...
So we can take that out?
Well, we, we can run it for its useful life, but we can't install new ones of that type of model. But what we did have a conversation...
We have one on Messer and Opichi Street, too, for the schools.
Those are timed for the school, a little different than the push-button-activated one for the pedestrian up by the hospital.
Now, what about, wasn't one installed on Indicott Street North, too? By the sign?
Those were going to be, and...
That hasn't been done.
That has not been done. It was going to be part of the railroad bridge project, and they're looking to see what options they have for that.
So something we did discuss just last week with the mayor and Counsel Haines in a pre-briefing on the Court Street project was the Vista intersection, and we're talking about possibility of just doing a simple bump out and eliminating a, on-street parking space there on either side. So you've, you've lessened the distance by having the bump outs come out, it's relatively inexpensive. You narrowed the road there, which would force traffic to go a little bit slower, and by moving one of the parking spaces, that shouldn't be that close to a crosswalk anyway, it's supposed to be a, a twenty-foot separation, will help with the sightline coming in both directions. So that's a relative, relatively inexpensive fix.
It's on the radar screen.
That could happen very soon. And the mayor also brought up a similar type of thought on Water Street, when you're crossing by the Beacon West condos, you come around that curve and the sightline isn't great, and you've got a lot of distance to travel there. So both of those are on our radar as well. But we did look to do those types of beacons, and we're grandfathered for what's there, but we can't add any new ones.
Hmm, that's strange. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else for the manager? Okay, we're on a new business. First, I have a new businesses resolution, two thousand eighteen dash eleven, supplemental appropriation with regard to the public school infrastructure grants. So I think we're all familiar with this by, by now, but this is the, the overall main motion that, in effect, ups the appropriation for the year for the school district to accommodate these grants in their sum total that they're allowed to spend. So by passing this resolution, we will be increasing in effect the school district appropriation for the year by four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, which is, which will be offset by the grant revenue.
The, just curious, the twenty percent, a hundred and ten thousand, is that in-kind or is that actual money?
No, it's actual money.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. So we need to, 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 before we get started on motions, anybody have any questions about this? We're all know what we're talking about here? All right. So a first motion being ordered would be to waive a second reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read resolution... Where is the number of it?
Two thousand and eight.
Eleven, two thousand eighteen dash eleven, by title only.
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Hamel. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Balance seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution eleven, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Now we're on to Opichi Park, a resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve.
Mr. Mayor, you have to do the second motion on that page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've waived the reading, now we've got to do the motion.
Ahead of myself here, wishful thinking. So we've waived the second reading. Now we need to, a motion to approve and accept the supplemental appropriation in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars in unanticipated revenue for the use of the public school infrastructure grants per RSA one ninety-eight, colon, fifteen Y, paragraph three D.
So moved.
By Counsel Hamel, seconded by Counsel Haines. Any discussion?
Counsel Lippman? I just think it's worth noting that this is all to improve the security of our schools, and, you know, the timing of it in light of recent national events seems very appropriate, and glad that we had been ahead of the curve in terms of trying to get this completed.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving Resolution eleven, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, Resolution eleven is approved. Okay. Next, we're on to Resolution twelve, having to do with the Native American statute, relative to authorizing, the authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend unanticipated revenue in regards to the city receiving donations for use toward the restoration in regards to the city receiving donations for use toward the restoration of the Native America statue at Opichi Park. As stated earlier, those donations so far total eight hundred and forty dollars. Any questions before we get to motions? Okay, the first motion would be waive reading of Resolution twelve in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Motion, please. Counselor Lippman makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion of this resolution? Waiving, waiving the reading of this resolution? All those in favor, raise a hand, please. Five votes, the affirmative, that's been waived. Now a motion is ordered to accept Resolution two thousand eighteen twelve relative to the authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend unanticipated revenue in regards to the city receiving donations for use toward the restoration of the Native American statue at Opichi Park. Someone care to place that motion? Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion?
Counselor Leven. Curious when we actually will be making the repairs?
I think the Parks and Recreation Department was actually doing something with, I don't want to quite say it was an x-ray, but some kind of scanning device or something, doing an assessment. That happened over the last couple of weeks to determine what the actual repairs needed are going to be. So I think the diagnosis of the patient, if you will, has occurred and we'll be putting together a fix.
Did they already do that, you said?
I believe, I believe it was mentioned at staff meeting last week that it happened in the last week or two.
Oh, okay.
So who's gonna make the determination whether to fix it or not?
Oh, I think the expert of whoever scans and looks at the interior and what's left there to work with is going to come back with a recommendation as to how it could be approached and we'll assess it and.
And the cost.
And the cost.
Okay. Any further discussion of Resolution twelve? Okay, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twelve, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that is approved.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would ask you to go to twenty-one D next and skip twenty-one C just in the working of the agenda. We had to go back and adjust something. So the nine school grants that I know you thought you were done with are under twenty-one D, and we need still to accept the nine school grants individually.
Can I get sick at this point?
Well, I think the superintendent was saying here, so we could get a little bit more.
All right, so you want us to skip to page forty-one?
I think that would wrap up the school and that would allow you then to get into the conversation.
Yeah, but I don't want Superintendent Minahan to be able to leave early. He's probably got his car warming up on the curb as it is. All right, so we went through this last time. We have to go through it again. Luckily, this time, last time, we took twenty-seven motions to approve these nine. Tonight, we only need eighteen, so that's a good. So we're gonna rush through this. We've gotta find a different way to do this. Pretty quickly here. So what we're gonna do is introduce each resolution and move to read by title only and then move to approve it. So we got nine times two equals eighteen motions we need to do here quickly.
Is that how we have to do it?
Yes.
All right. First one is to adopt Resolution zero-two. Allow the city manager to accept and expend multiple grants on behalf of Laconia School District, including a hundred and ten thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for surveillance equipment. That's Resolution two, which is found on page forty-two. So a motion be in order to read Resolution two by title only and waive reading the entire resolution.
No move.
Counselor Bound, Counselor Chaney seconds that. Any discussion of waiving the reading? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you, five, an affirmative. Motion carries. Next, a motion be in order to approve the authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend a hundred and ten thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for school surveillance equipment, adoption of Resolution zero-two. Sign of that motion, please. Counselor Lippman, is there a second? Counselor Chaney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution two, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. Two down, sixteen to go. Next up is Resolution three, which authorizes city manager to accept and expend eleven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars for two-way radios for the school district. Motion be in order to waive reading of Resolution three in its entirety and to read by title only. Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That is approved, thank you. Now we're on to approving Resolution oh-three for two-way radios, eleven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. I'm gonna need a motion to adopt Resolution three. Seconded by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is Resolution four, to accept.
We just did this, did you do ten thousand nine hundred and nine dollars for?
What are you doing next?
Resolution for number three?
Doing that now.
Doing it now.
That's item three, but it's Resolution four.
Okay.
Just let it go.
Hey, a moment now, I'm just trying to catch up here.
Go back to sleep.
We should doze off in shifts here, somebody always on the alert. Okay. Next is to approve the authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend ten thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, RE, Resolution number four, for S-two, I don't know what that is, upgrades. Motion be in order to waive the reading. Can we have that motion, please? Counselor Chaney, seconded by Counselor Bound, who is now awake. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading of Resolution four, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, the motion carries. All right, we're on to the final passage of Resolution four for, for security upgrades in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next, we're on to Resolution five. This is to authorize the city manager to accept and expend fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for hardware control systems for the school district. This is Resolution zero-five. Motion be in order to waive the reading of Resolution zero-five in its entirety and to read by title only. Moved by Counselor Bound, seconded by Counselor Chaney. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. Thank you. All right, we're now on to passage of Resolution five. A hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for the hardware control system. All those, I need a motion, sorry. Counselor Lippman makes the motion?
Yes, it's fourteen thousand nine eighty-five.
Fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Counselor Chaney seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of passing Resolution five, second reading, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, we're on to Resolution oh-six, to authorize the city manager to accept and expend eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, RE, Resolution zero-six, for security glass film. Need a motion to waive the second reading of that resolution and to read by title only. Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is to vote on the final passage of Resolution six. Eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars for security glass film. Motion be in order to approve the resolution. Counselor Chaney, seconded by Counselor Bound. Any discussion? All those in favor of final passage, Resolution six, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, the motion carries. We're on to Resolution seven. Hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars in door hardware. So we need a motion to waive the reading of the entire Resolution zero-seven and to read by title only. Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Counselor Bound seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, so we're on to final passage, to authorize the city manager to accept and expend a hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars per Resolution zero-seven for door hardware for the school district. Have that motion, please. Counselor Bound, seconded by Counselor Lippman. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution zero-seven, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Three more to go. We're on to Resolution zero-eight, to authorize the expenditure of thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for panic buttons. Is that resolution? And we need a motion to waive the reading of Resolution zero-eight and read by title only. Counselor Chaney makes that motion. Counselor Lippman seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, we're on to final passage of Resolution zero-eight, to expend thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for panic buttons for the school. I need one of those. I don't know how many you're getting, but can I have one of them? All right, someone move the Resolution zero-eight. Counselor Lippman, seconded by Counselor Chaney. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. We're on to Resolution zero-nine. This is to spend fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars on Laconia High School cameras, per Resolution zero-nine. A motion be in order to waive the reading of zero-nine in its entirety and read by title only, made by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, yes. What did we just vote on? Did we just vote the resolution or just the reading?
The waiving.
Waiving, all right. So now we need to vote on second reading of Resolution zero-nine, to authorize city manager to expend fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars on Laconia High School cameras. Can I have that motion, please? Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, and Resolution zero-nine passes unanimously. And finally, we're on to Resolution ten. Authorize the expenditure of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for Laconia Middle School security cameras. This is, and we need a motion to waive the reading of Resolution ten by, in its entirety and to read by title only. Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Counselor Chaney seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving the reading of Resolution ten in its entirety, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that carries. And finally, we are on to second reading of Resolution ten, to spend thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars on security cameras for Laconia Middle School. Can I have that motion, please? Counselor Lippman, seconded by Counselor Bound. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution ten, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, and that motion carries. Thank you for enduring that. Okay, now we're gonna go back to item twenty-one C, page thirty-six, improvements to Union Avenue, Elm Street intersection. You, you will recall at our last meeting, this was introduced as a possible alternative by Mr. Anderson of the Department of Public Works. And the council agreed to, to bless that particular proposal, which called for the two lanes of through traffic southbound on, on Union Avenue. And to, to do our best to notify the public of what's on the table and whatnot to get public discussion going on this before we pass a final motion. Now, we need to make a decision on this by March twelfth. So we do not need to make any decisions tonight. And there's, there's, there's no proposed motion in your packet. That doesn't mean that a counselor can't make a motion. You certainly are entitled to do so if you wish. But the primary purpose of having this on the agenda tonight is for a council discussion and about the project itself, questions that need answering, and what you would like the next step to be. We could, as an example, hold a public hearing on, on. What's our, what's our meeting?
Twelfth.
Is our meeting the twelfth? Yes. We could hold a public hearing on March twelfth, if you so desire, and schedule a vote for that same night. That's one possible course of action. So that's really what we're discussing tonight, is not only the ins and outs of the project as proposed, but also what our next step should be. Anybody care to open the conversation?
I'll open it.
Not you.
I can't do that?
You can't do what?
Open the conversation?
Oh, you only close conversation. Anybody?
Yeah.
Counselor Bound.
I guess if nobody else wants to address this, I would, I would suggest that we go forward with the concept on the park side with respect to moving the sidewalk. At least this gets us off of square one and does something there. We don't lose, what, six spaces?
On the which side?
On the park side.
Park side, okay.
On the park side. I'm not sure.
That's the elimination of the six parking spaces and two through lanes.
Moving the sidewalk back and eliminating six parking place, parking spots to accommodate that, better accommodate the through traffic. I know you didn't discuss this, and I put this on the table, but the parking spaces on the other side, I don't know if we have to make a decision on that by March twelfth. And I guess I'll take my lead from city manager or Wes with respect to that. Because I want, I want to do something about that. And I think there's a solution to it, either with ten-minute parking or loading or unloading. It's been my anecdotal experience at that intersection that those parking places aren't utilized a great deal during the course of the day. That's anecdotal experience, just driving by. But I know what a problem it creates if there's just one or two cars there and the lane through north on Union Avenue. So I, for purposes of that decision, somebody, I would like some guidance from the city manager or from you, Wes, as to whether that's a decision that needs to be made on March twelfth or not. Because it seems to me that's a striping issue and doesn't require any kind of construction or anything like that.
Let me jump in with one thing, and then I'll let Wes expand upon that. So I think if we were just to eliminate the six spaces along the park and adjust the sidewalk where it need be, what we are, what's gonna be a result of that is the parking spaces on the east side of the street will now be narrowed from their current ten-foot width to an eight-foot width in order for the design and the flow of merging two lanes southbound to come into one before you get up to Mustache Pete's. That's, that's a result. So the spaces are going to get narrower. We're not doing anything with moving the sidewalk or adjusting pavement or curbing or anything on the east side of the street if we were to do that. So you're right, in that case, it could just be.
So the center line is gonna have to move to the east?
The, the center line, planning purposes wise, would move a little bit to the west as you approach for the south towards the end of the, basically where the, the green building is. We haven't got a survey done yet, so we haven't got the exact measurements.
Closer to the green building?
Correct. I don't think it's much, but we haven't done the survey. We haven't done the exact layout yet. So I won't know precisely until we get that piece done.
Counselor Lippman, or Counselor Hamel?
I don't, I don't know, but this, this plan B, to take those spaces and to make on the north side of the intersection, two lanes where you can go straight through, and then try and merge them on the south side of the intersection. We have some of those in the area now. There's one at the Bellinat Mall, when you go past the second light. And there's two down by Tanger Outlets. They're, they're basically a game of chicken. And it's who is going to give way or not give way. And I really don't want to see that there. I, I see enough of it when you head towards Tilton. Cars just will stay right alongside you and, you know, it says merge left, they don't care. They're gonna, they're keeping going, so you gotta stop. This, this is gonna be nothing different. And once you get to that point, whichever car is gonna give way, to me, that's just gonna back everything up, because it does down there. The cars that are in the lane that's supposed to merge into the other one, they're staying there and they're looking straight ahead and they don't care about the guy that was over there. So I think we're gonna bring, if anybody's been to a Gunkwit, there's an intersection there called Malfunction Junction, kinda like what we had at the Weers in, right downtown at Gunkwit. There's no stops, no stop signs. It's you go, they go, you go, they go. It's, I, I just can't see that there. And I think with, during the summer, when you have a lot of traffic, that right-hand lane, 'cause you're probably gonna have to say that right-hand lane has to merge into the left one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So those cars are gonna be stacked up on Union Avenue now, because now that's straight through. They don't just need. They don't just need to turn right. And once they get there, it's gonna back up through that, in my mind, I could be wrong. It's gonna back up through that intersection, and then the light's gonna turn, and they're gonna be there.
The difference is, there's a little bit of problem difference between the two. On the ones up by the Bellinat Mall, you have two lanes through merging to one. What you have here is a through-left. So once the left turn stops, no one's getting by. What that does is give the ability for a left turn to stop, and the other lane can, to flow through.
You lost me there, what?
Okay, as you're heading south...
South.
South on Union Ave, going to the intersection. If someone making a left, excuse me, left into Clinton Street, or left into Chestnut, or left into Fratello's, they instantly stop all the through traffic.
Yep.
Okay? So all you got going is the right. What that does, if that same thing happens, anybody that's in the right lane and through lane can still keep going straight. So yes, you will have your problem to grieve if both happen to be going through, but you won't have that problem if someone's making a left. And that happens a lot.
Yeah, but...
So under this plan, we would prohibit left-hand turns?
No. Under this plan, you would have the ability to have left-hand turns through, 'cause it'd be a left hand...
Into Fratello's or Clinton Street.
And through, and a right hand, and through.
So I agree, the majority of the traffic is going straight there, but occasionally you get a break by a left-hand turn. Similar thing in the right-hand turn lane, probably eighty percent, if not more, of the traffic will be going through, but occasionally you will get a break in that traffic while somebody turning right. So hopefully, there's a little bit of break, it's not necessarily two solid lines, but I understand your concerns.
Yeah, I don't care for that. This is almost an intersection where you can't do a lot, in my mind. With, you know, I agree, they need the parking one way or the other. You know, maybe some businesses in the future might come in, we have no idea. But anyway, but I do think there's two spaces down above Mustache Pete's there that are for those, and basically, it's the apartments that park there. They're there twenty-four hours a day, they're never ticketed. Police cars go by those things probably fifteen times a day, and they're there. And that's where the road really narrows down, right there by Robin's Auto. So when they throw a door open and you're coming, there's nowhere to go. You're either gonna peel the door around to the fender, or you gotta go in the other lane. And that happened to me just the other day, and I never looked through the door open.
So what would be the obstacle to, obstacles to moving the merging point further south or eliminating it all together and have two-way all the way down to Mester Street?
We would basically have to start taking some buildings to be able to widen the road enough. I know at least the first building on the west side coming would be, but I'd have to sit...
It's the road's three lanes wide, all the way down.
Correct. But you also have, as you approach from the south, you have three lanes coming up. So you're actually, for a while, gonna have to have four lanes.
But there's a, the pinch-off point is at Robin's Auto, there's two lanes there.
Correct, but you're still...
There's no three lanes there.
For a very brief period there, yeah, yeah.
Yes. At a point, you're still gonna have four lanes if you really wanna solve the problem. If you're going to this extent, then for that first piece, south of it, you're gonna have two southbound lanes, you're gonna have a left-turn lane, you know, coming north, and you're gonna have a through lane. If you're throwing out the option for having the, you know, the left and through in that first lane, your only other option is basically just merging the two phases together. That's the Clinton phase and the Elm Street phase. That's the only other option that you have.
So that's combining the traffic lights, so when it's green, coming through Elm Street, it's green at Clinton's, but we'll have the dedicated arrow, so folks making a left turn from Elm onto Union will know they've got the right of way, because right now, that green is just a solid lens, and they don't, unless they know the light, they don't know if that person from Clinton is going at the same time. So we would look to upgrade that left turn, and probably the same one on, probably just on Elm. This is, Clinton traffic's minimal, but let the person know who's making the left-hand turn that they've got the dedicated.
Put an arrow there or something.
And it would be an arrow, and then once the, you know, it would switch to...
I don't, I don't think we can afford, personal opinion, I don't think we can afford to do nothing. And I say that as one who historically travels through that intersection several times every day at a minimum. And, you know, I have a feel for how much traffic Union Avenue carries, the upper part of Union Avenue certainly, and it's a lot. And it's very difficult, not just during rush hour, it's very difficult to pull out on the street from, if you're turning left in either direction on Upper Union Avenue, almost any time of the day except late at night. I think this is an economic development issue in my mind, because I see how bad the traffic backs up going in both directions, and I would disagree with Representative St. Clair to say that it's just rush hour. Certainly in the summer, it's a lot more than just rush hour. And, you know, it's going to be a detriment to the growth of our community if we can't solve this problem. You know, we don't want people to have to avoid Union Avenue, because you can't get through various bottlenecks and whatnot, and this is the worst of the bottlenecks in terms of traffic backing way up. So I just don't think we can afford to do nothing and just say, motorists, you're on your own, and this is the inconvenience you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to suffer through to either visit or work in our city. And I just think that's a, not a solid piece of public policy to do that. I think we have an obligation to try to do whatever we can to remove that bottleneck or at least mitigate it to where it's not as bad as it is. And the most obvious thing, as I said at our last meeting, is that left-hand, that right-hand turn lane, southbound for Elm Street, where less than, in my mind, less than ten percent of the traffic that's using Union Avenue uses that left turn lane. So you see cars backed up for half a mile at times, certainly a quarter of a mile on Union Avenue waiting to get through that light, and yet somebody who wants to go on Elm Street has a free pass. And it's like the carpool lane to go there. So I, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the solution is, and I can see the pros and cons of what's on the table for us, but I just don't, again, I don't think we can afford to do nothing and just leave it as it is.
Why is, excuse me, I've already spoken, I'll wait. Go ahead.
Counselor Chaney? Do we have a traffic count for this? How many left, how many right, how many straight?
We did one for the, well, we did the adjustments for the timing phase, so I could pull that out. But again, that was done after Labor Day. So we don't have, we can pull off the state traffic counts that's on it for, you know, a sample that they've taken, depending upon what point they've done it, and see what it looks like for that intersection.
It's amazing to me how much, and how much, I've been in, office-wise, I've been in the same location on Upper Union Avenue for seven years now, and in, just in that time, the traffic has gotten worse and worse and worse. I mean, it's just amazing how many cars are using Upper Union Avenue.
What disappoints me is the number of people who will stay in the right lane, whether they're northbound or southbound, to make a turn. Where there, I'm sorry. Where there's that middle lane for turning purposes...
Yep.
People don't use it. They stay in the travel portion of the road.
Well, and on the southbound, on the left-hand turn lane, as you come from the, as you approach the intersection from the south, the backup line normally, no, I shouldn't say normally, frequently exceeds the depth of that turnout lane.
I just think it would help to know how many people turn right on Elm Street. Anecdotally, you think it's ten or twenty percent.
Yeah, I think it's ten percent, but...
But what if it's thirty or forty percent, you know?
Well, then it's a different ballgame.
Exactly, which is why I think we need, we need the numbers, or some idea anyways.
You know, and I heard from one constituent this week, who, I don't know whether all of you got that letter or not, is, you know, a local who makes that right-hand turn as a matter of, you know, I don't know whether he lives in Lakeport or whatever, but he does it every day, so it's a great deal for him, and he doesn't want it changed, for obvious reasons.
It's always who's oxes being gored.
He's got, he's got a dedicated right to a whole lane there to make his right-hand turn.
Why is March twelfth the drop-dead date?
Why is March twelfth the drop-dead date?
Because we're looking to start construction on that portion of Union Ave to Stark Street post-Labor Day, and we need to be able to incorporate...
Okay.
...the design into the engineering, the engineering design.
Okay.
Are you gonna, when you do that intersection, you're gonna put camera up there on that one?
I haven't got that far yet on it. We're still trying to work out the physical layout of it.
You know, I think, you know, the adjustment that Wes made with the timing of that to allow more of the southbound traffic on Union Avenue to get through, I think that's helped a lot.
I can't testify to that, 'cause I'm not going to the office every day like I did for years, so I, I don't, in the last month, I haven't driven that a lot. Would you increase it by six seconds, was it?
We actually did several things. We did a time of day and a day a week, so it changes based off of what time of day and what day of the week it is. Matter of fact, we set up the weekends like it's rush hour, 'cause that's based off the pattern, that's what it's more appropriate to. And then we took a little bit of time off of a couple of the signal phases and added to others.
Yeah, I think it made a big difference there, but I just think if you got two straight-through lanes going into that intersection on the south side, it's not gonna be pretty.
I agree with that.
'Cause I see what happens, like I said, when you're going past Lowe's, there's two of them there at each light.
In Tilton?
Yeah, by the Lowe's store, or whatever's over there.
Twice the road narrows down.
Yeah, there's two lights in two short places where cars can go through on the right of you, and they, then they're supposed to merge, but, you know, they just follow you down side by side till one decides, well, I better put the brakes on, and I...
Same thing in Merritt, at the intersection in Merritt, that's a kamikaze.
Yeah, the one, when you turn right to go towards Hotch Turkey Farm, you know, you get that same thing there, it's, you know, who's gonna go first? People aren't patient anymore, so I just think that this one here with the two lanes coming in, I'd have a tough time voting for that one, but it's whatever the majority of the council would want.
Is there any chance we can pick up more width? I mean, I'm looking at this, and it looks like Fratello sits back...
You have no room there for the sidewalk. If you're gonna have sidewalk there, it's gotta meet ADA standard, so you don't have any other place to put it. The only other way you could go wider is you're gonna have to expand the retaining wall out.
I guess what Counsel Chaney was saying is, do we have to have a sidewalk on both sides, right?
There is no sidewalk on the other side.
There is no sidewalk on the other side.
There isn't.
It's a guardrail.
It's a guardrail.
But maybe there should be.
Once you get north of, once you get north of Clinton Street and Elm Street...
There's, the only piece of sidewalk is...
Guardrail forever.
Might be a sidewalk down by Dunkin' Donuts that they made them put in.
That's where it starts in again.
In front of Dairy Queen, that's it.
That's where it starts in again, right?
Sidewalk to nowhere.
I'd like to hear from Chief Camfield, see what he thinks of that, that thing. I'll put, we'll put him on the spot.
He was kinda hoping you would leave him.
Yeah, I'm sure he hoped I'd leave him alone, 'cause he'll be investigating all the accidents there, so...
Jeez, I don't know. You know, I do see your point. I do agree that I think some of the timing changes have made a difference. I haven't personally seen that intersection, like watched it for a long time, but it, northbound traffic definitely gets backed up there, you know, as people will try to make that left-turn turn on Elm Street, but...
I wonder if there's a way to, you've got, when you're heading north on Union Avenue, you got the left-hand turn onto Elm, and then the straight-through traffic, and the southbound traffic has to wait till the left-hand turn goes. That wouldn't make any difference. I was trying to think of...
What's your opinion of two lanes merging into one, in general? What's your experience? The Wild, Wild West that Counselor Hamill was suggesting, or we all know better and we alternate every other car, or somewhere in between?
You know, I guess, I mean, certainly, if there were turn, you know, cars turning left into the post office, into Clinton Street, something like that, cars turning right on Elm Street, it kind of diminishes the two-way traffic, two lanes coming at it, so I agree with Wes on that point. I don't think it would be much of an issue, but that's just...
I'm sorry, you what?
I don't think that would be much of an issue. Just my opinion. It happens, I'd say quite regularly, that people wind up in that right-hand turn lane anyway, and just go, especially in the summertime, that happens quite regularly.
Yeah, they go straight through, then they ram into the car that's parked by the park. I've seen it. Drove his trunk right through his front...
One of the other questions tonight is the parking enforcement issue, Chief. I have some experience, I didn't like to go to parties on the weekends, 'cause people complained about the tickets they got, so I know it's not a popular sport, but it probably would help some of the businesses there and some of the issues that we're talking about if we could get your watch commanders to push enforcement.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly keep an eye on that and do a little bit better in that area. Most of our parking enforcement comes from the students that we hired during the summertime. I know they pay attention to it, you know, particularly in the summertime, the Weers and the downtown parking, but we can, we can do more.
'Cause there's a, there's a two-hour parking sign right on that pole where the guy parks, right in front of there, so...
So I think it's definitely something, if there was some attention paid to that, it doesn't take long for someone to understand that you're enforcing it now. But the other thing is, right now with the winter parking ban, all those cars need to go somewhere at night after eleven-thirty or twelve-thirty. I mean, they're not supposed to be on the street.
But they're there.
But they're there.
They're all over the city.
And that's an enforcement issue that probably ought to be looked at.
Does, I guess I'll ask the question the other way. Does doing anything with the parking spaces on the east side of the street, those parking places in front of the Sunrise Towers and those stores, does that do anything to solve the issue that we're facing for southbound traffic and the jam-ups that we're having there? Does that do a thing at all? Does it give you more space? What happens? Does that move the equation?
Is that a question for Public Works?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw the chief looking a little nervous there.
To make everything work, as we did for the combined option, we had to narrow down the lanes, the parking spikes to eight feet. That's based without getting the survey out there and actually get, you know, exact measurements. If you eliminate them, what it really helps more is your northbound traffic, because it gives you more room to have a longer left-turn lane, so you won't have that stacking effect that backs traffic up all the time. So you'd have more room to stack cars that are making the left turn. Hopefully, they're, they stop making, you know, driving over across the W yellow line to get around as much, 'cause they've got the room. But that's what the major impact is associated with getting rid of those parking spaces, is the ability to lengthen that left-turn lane.
So what would happen if we, what would happen if we eliminated all or most of the parking spaces on the right-hand side?
The Opera House side?
The, the high-rise side, the east side?
If you look carefully...
We'd gain ten feet.
Basically, we'd gain ten feet, that gives us the ability to do it. Now, if you look actually at the intersection itself, the northbound lane is a little offset, and it has to be that way, 'cause the way the sidewalks line up on both of the intersections. So we would still have a no-parking zone that's sort of hashed off on the southbound side of the intersection by the Opera House to get people to sort of shift left a little bit, they're going straight through, to line up with the lane on the north side of the intersection.
Going toward Fratello's?
Yes.
I guess what I'm asking is, and this is just 'cause we're exploring all possibilities here, if we eliminated, I don't know, eleven spots or whatever it is on the right-hand side, would that gain enough, with that ten feet we would gain there, with that, and then moving the center line over toward the east, would that mitigate what, to some extent, or total extent, what...
Not really, because your constraining point will still be that point where you have the left-turn lane and the right, and the stra... and the right, and the straight-through right at the intersection by the Opera House. That's your constraint point. By eliminating the parking on the west side and moving that sidewalk, it gives us that room that we need to be able to merge the two lanes together.
There's probably one way to solve this whole thing, and it was what Mr. Allen brought up. We buy one of these old places, rip it down, make a forty-car parking spot area if we can, and you can eliminate every space there is on that road. Otherwise, I mean, it's, it's putting a Band-Aid on something, in my mind, what we're trying to do. We, we really need to take, get one of those big places and tear it down and build parking off the road. And you can eliminate parking spaces on both sides and do what we want. Is there, is that feasible?
Is there any property there that we could, that we could pick up? I mean, is that even?
I think it is.
Yeah, I can't imagine there's not theoretically space there. Certainly, if we're talking about eliminating eighteen spaces, there would be something big enough there to accommodate eighteen cars. I mean, one of the problems, and we even talked about this, and, and again, I'm speaking from personal experience here, is when Mr. Allen was talking to us la- earlier, uh, it, it came to mind that, that because there's a significant lack of parking on the, on the, uh, west side of the street from the, uh, from the green apartment building up there, it is very common, in my estimation, for people to park on the other side of the street and jaywalk. In fact, we had a fatality five years or less there, that corner where a gentleman was jaywalking at night and no, car didn't see him and ran over him. But it, it's, it's not uncommon to see people parking on the east side of the street and jaywalk, not using the intersection at all or the crosswalk that's down by Robbins down there. They just jaywalk across the street there, and that's extremely dangerous, especially at night. That area is not well-lit at night. I'm gonna take, uh, the opportunity to think outside the box as you had suggested here. Would it be easier to replace the park space, um, down the line and turn what is the park space into a parking lot? And acquire another building over time to replace the park, the, the
I, I think, uh...
I mean, that...
That might be a tough in and out right there.
It's going to be.
But I mean, it's...
Yeah, where would your entrance and egress, that'd be the biggest problem.
Would have to be on Elm Street.
So close, we'd have to be on Elm Street.
But, but then, you know, the park doesn't go down far enough. I mean, it's right at the railroad track is kind of where it ends, and that's, we're right in the intersection there. You know, that, that Opera House, a couple of years ago, sold for seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe it was.
Oh, it was less than that.
Maybe it was forty-five, I remember forty-five or seventy-five.
Very small amount of money.
That's what that sold for. And it was a business that wanted to buy that and do what we're saying, talking about tonight.
Yeah, there was a business that wanted to buy it and tear it down for parking, and they thought that they would be the center of a firestorm if they did so, and so they decided not to do it. Not to make it public what they wanted to do. But they were gonna tear it down and put parking there.
That, that's a very small lot, if you look at the acres to that, the Opera House.
Yeah, I don't think you could get eighteen cars in there.
The Opera House sits pretty much on the property line, if not over the property line in some cases.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't gain that much parking there.
And there's the space behind it.
So is the park. There's a house next door on Clinton.
And I don't thi- I don't think the park, I don't think the park itself would provide enough space to deal with the parking issue, so...
You know, isn't there a, uh... Isn't there a park, it seems to me there's a parking lot at the corner of, that may be owned by Laconia Housing Authority. There's a parking lot, not paved, I don't think, I'm not sure of that, at the, at the, in back of the senior high-rise there? At the corner of Clinton and Mechanic?
Yes.
That's theirs.
Yes, there is a parking lot there.
I believe that belongs to the high-rise.
And that's the high-rise parking lot, and you, you need...
But how, how utilized is it?
We looked at the number...
It's pretty well utilized.
We looked at the number of units in there, and there's eighty units, and they have forty-four parking spaces, so that probably doesn't even meet today's standard for apartments, visitors, caregivers, that type of stuff.
No, it's, it's full.
Wes, does this intersection have to be absolutely done at this time? I mean, is this some...
We, we have to take the road south all the way to the intersection, because we've gotta, we've gotta rebuild it up, up, you know, where the retaining wall is.
Yep.
So the answer is, no, we, we really don't need to necessarily, but you're not gonna do anything in regards to improving the traffic flow either. And if we're gonna do anything, we may be ripping up what we just put down if you decide to do something in the future.
I just wondering if, uh, we could get more time of actually evaluate of, of buying a home, some, buying something in that area and making a parking lot and eliminating all that mess right there. But, you know, it's not something we can do in a week, in a month.
What's the, what's the cost, the additional cost of going ahead and doing the planning for this thing? And then deciding in, when we get ready to do it, that no, we're not going to do it? Have we burnt ourselves a lot, a little?
I think it won't be much. The piece will be is what we have to do through those traffic signals and such. That piece we could pull out as like a separate contract or an additive for that, for that. Because we still have our straight-through, we still have the right-turn lane. That piece, I think we're okay on that. It's the south side that gives us the problems. So that, that, that would be doable. I just don't know what the additional cost would be if you make a change of decision in the future, because we may again have to go back and rip up things.
Well, here's my question. We go ahead with the, the two drive-throughs, you can go right onto Elm Street, you can go straight ahead
Right.
onto Union Avenue. We make that decision. It, it's a little unfortunate, and I'm not blaming anybody, that we don't have more information in terms of traffic counts and that, and that kind of stuff to give us the sense. But if in three months, we say, no, we've looked at this, that option is not a good option, what have we lost in terms of money to put the plan together to do the, whatever you guys do when you lay out the streets? So what have we lost? Have we lost ten thousand dollars? Have we lost a hundred thousand dollars?
Probably closer than the ten thousand? Now, I'm gonna hate myself for this suggestion. The reason why we're driving the project to start after Labor Day of this year is because the condition of that, this southbound lane up against the guardrail. That's the only thing that's driving that at this point. We could do some patches or something to get us through and delay it for a full year. But, uh...
It's sinking.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, it's risky.
Could, could you do the, uh, the, the, uh, southbound lanes on that? Could they be set up so that you could do the two straight-throughs with the right turn, left turn?
That, that's...
And not just, not paint those arrows for now?
That, that's what I'm saying, it'd be very minimal cost on the southbound lanes, because you're still keeping two.
Yeah.
Really, your, most of your cost is all gonna be associated with the traffic signal right at the intersection. So that's why I'm thinking maybe in the ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar range, but don't quote me on that at this point.
You're in the minute.
So you could plan, if I'm hearing you right, you could plan for two southbound lanes that, and, and determine at a later date where they were going, in effect? It wouldn't affect either plan, keeping the right-hand turn lane or turning it into a through lane?
The only piece that would impact would be what we do with the traffic signals, so we would have to...
Well, right now, you wouldn't have to do anything with the traffic signals.
I, I have to do something with it, because, you know, I'm coming in with the sidewalks, I gotta do the ADA portion. So that's what I'm saying, there's gonna be some...
If we don't go into that intersection, we stop
Correct.
there
Yep.
then you, you're, the cost
I'm not technical.
The cost might be whatever the increases in labor and material.
I'd have to play with numbers and come back with you on, on March twelfth on that one.
You know, I, I just think, you know, this is an important intersection. And whatever decision we make, it, it should be the right one the first time. And, and not say, gee, I wish we would, I ju- I wish we would've done this, wish we would've done that. I think we should, we need more time to look, and maybe look into buying a building, see if there's anything available. You know, I, I know that ain't gonna be cheap either, tearing it down and everything that's associated with it.
Well, tearing it down would probably be negligible.
Get everything in it that's
Unless it's
no good.
concrete. Tearing down a stick-built building wouldn't cost very much.
I, I just think we should take more time on this intersection and, and evaluate a lot of different things instead of just
Yeah, I think that's pretty obvious. I think we're nowhere near a consensus at this point in time as to, nor is it likely that we're gonna solve that in two weeks.
But, but the benefit is, is anything north of that is really independent
Right.
of it. I just have to talk with the consultants and figure out the, the traffic signal portion right at the intersection and get back with it for the March twelfth meeting.
Okay.
Well, while we're looking at acquiring stuff, I, I, I'm, I'm not aware of what the problem is on the north side, the retain, retaining wall, is that starting to fail, is that what I understood?
Basically, what's happened is between surface flow and underground flow, the soil that's underneath the road has been washing out through the retaining wall, so basically, we're not having compaction there anymore. And there's some fairly large voids. Luckily, they're outside of the right-of-way, but that's why you're seeing the rutting happen.
So have we looked at expanding or moving the retaining wall to gain some?
We don't own that property anymore.
I understand we don't, but we're talking about buying a house and tearing it down. Maybe we oughta buy ten feet.
But we have a right-of-way through there, but that's it, right?
We have a right-of-way for maintenance of the existing to access for maintenance of infrastructure.
We just sold that property last year.
Well...
But, but I mean, it, it...
To Erwin Marine.
But, um, excuse me, but, but they were after the building, I, I mean...
No, I think they're gonna tear the building down.
Space-wise, I meant the, the building space.
Yeah, they want it for the space.
They, they park boats on the, as you're going north on the left side of that property, not against the retaining wall, or at least I haven't seen that. So I'm wondering if we approached him and said, would you consider, you know, giving us some of that space or, or giving us some of that? We oughta at least ask.
Wouldn't hurt to ask, but again, it takes time. I mean, it's not something we're gonna get all wrapped up in two weeks' time.
But, but to his point, his issue is the south side of the intersection and the intersection. Instead of making plans for the north side, why don't we see what our options are in terms of, of expanding that, whether it's cutting back the sidewalk or moving the sidewalk to the other side, something.
So what would we gain by gaining ten feet?
Another lane.
A third lane?
Right, you're, you'd have a left-turn lane, a through lane, and a right lane.
That still wouldn't, that still wouldn't alleviate Counselor Hamel's
Yes, it would.
concern, why?
Be- because you'd have only one lane going straight ahead.
Where would the other two lanes go?
Well, you got a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane. And the left-turn lane would, would advantage Fratello's, uh, the Case and Cag, a lot of places where people now are making left turns and sitting there for two or three minutes.
But we'd still only have one through lane.
Right.
Which would back up forever.
But, but if, if, if the people making left turns aren't plugging it up, it should help clean them out quicker.
A little bit, but not.
The other thing to consider, if you have a dedicated left turn there, at some point, you're gonna have to put a green arrow to give them the right to cross, because in most cases, they sit there because the traffic's coming so far. So now you're adding another leg to the signal, which is backing up one of the other legs at that point.
The other thing I'm, I'm concerned with, with that is that wall. I know it was looked at and it says it's okay. I mean, we're gonna be putting in all this money into a road with a wall at...
The wall is part of this, part of this effort. In other words, we're...
To redo it?
It, it depends upon, I have tasked the consultants to come up with one of two things. Either do we need to rebuild it? Or with just some minimal stabilization, can we do everything and have a sta- stable wall at the end?
Okay.
They have, they have a do-out to me on that.
Yeah, because once you start digging down and all this stuff right in that area where that wall is, could be opening up a can of worms there.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what my thoughts are.
Oh, no.
Yep.
My thoughts are that you do the options that, um, were described, these two lane, the two lanes through, and you make the planning for that, because we're not going to get answers to how much, can we pick up ten feet? On that side, can we pick up property on that side? We're not gonna be able to do that, um, in the timeframes that we've got now. It makes no sense to do the work at the Elm Street, Union Avenue intersection without accommodating for these changes, because it's gonna cost us a lot more money in the future.
So you're talking about the northern part of it?
So you, you go ahead and say, well, let's look at what it'll look, I can continue to look at it. And if we finally have to abandon it, then what, what we've lost is the cost of putting together the pricing on it. That's what, that's what we've lost.
Well, we've really not lost anything, because you gotta do that planning on the north side anyway.
Correct.
Right.
The only piece I have to figure out is the traffic signal portion.
And, and what do you have to figure out about that? I don't get that.
Because there, if I come into the intersection and do some improvements there, and I do some improvements to sidewalks and the signals, then ADA rules start cut-kicking in.
But who says you have to do that now?
Uh, ADA rules. Basic- basically, uh, I'll ke- I'll keep it real simple. The way the federal rules state, say, and I'll use this as example, if I overlay a street and it has sidewalks, at the end of that overlay, the sidewalks on either side, if they're there, have to meet ADA standards.
So is it your intent to overlay the intersection at this point? If not, you just stop short of the intersection.
Correct.
You're not messing with the intersection, which could delay it until
Correct.
we do the south side and then do the intersection with the south side. In which case, if we did that, then we're, we're not wasting any money at all, because your plan for the north side is, would accommodate any of the options being discussed for the south side.
The only piece I, I have to check again is, because it's all hinges on what do I have to do with the traffic signals? That's what I gotta check on.
All right, so you can get back to us on that?
Right.
You know, so if you, if, so if this phase stops short of the intersection itself, would we avoid that expenditure?
Correct.
If we then take the intersection and lump it in with the south-side project, if and when that ever gets going?
Correct.
So where would we go, where would the phase go from if we stopped short of the intersection? Well, what are we doing? I don't know.
I, I, uh...
Because I don't know.
To Stark Street.
Well, you Stark Street.
Stark Street, right?
That's on the list of things to do, right?
Well, Stark Street, go heading south.
Stark Street to Fratello's.
For, to Fratello's. And the piece I'm gonna have to look at after this meeting is where can, where does it make sense to stop and still have sidewalks that make sense and everything else that makes sense? So I've got some analysis after this meeting.
Okay.
Well, why don't, why don't you get back to us on that and...
And can you get us those count, get us those counts that you have?
Right, I'll look to see what they are.
I understand.
If they're, depending upon what time, they may not mean, mean much for summertime traffic.
Also, if, uh, you know, since you're not gonna probably, well, we don't know yet if we are or not, but there's a, there's a section of road on Clinton Street from Lakeport Square that goes, uh, on the side of Fratello's. When they did Mechanic, Clinton, they did, we're down maybe seventy-five feet or seventy-five yards, whatever. Then when we did the intersection a long time ago, they came up fifty yards or whatever. There's a section in the middle that's totally falling apart, that no one could do that extra hundred yards or whatever, it's less than that.
You know, that reminds me, we, we already own property on Clinton Street.
Outside the park.
Yeah, the, the, the basketball court and whatnot there on, on... Yeah, the the basketball court and whatnot there on on, not the park itself, but the the basketball court.
They won't walk from there. They won't walk from there.
They get enough tickets, they will.
Well, I mean, that's not any, I mean, how close does it have to be? You're not gonna, where are you talking about?
One of the buildings right there on the avenue.
On the avenue itself, turning that into a apartment.
On Clinton Street?
No, no.
No.
It's not about Union Ave.
No.
Right there so you can see it. Just something to look at.
We've been going at this for about a half hour. I think it's time to.
It's a good discussion.
So I think to try to wrap this up, I think we have, if I'm understanding correctly, and please object if I if I am overstating this, I think you know what we're asking of you. I think that we're not in a position to put anything forward at the March 12th meeting. And and but I do think there's probably a consensus here to keep this on the agenda under old business so that we don't forget about it and we can come back to it at any point in time at any meeting. So that would be my recommendation is just to.
That's not my consensus.
It's not yours, okay.
I I've said it again, and I'll say I'll say it now. What we do is we plan for that intersection, doing that intersection now while we're doing the Stark Street, from Stark Street. And we go through with the plans for two lanes that can drive through down Union Avenue to accommodate that. That's, I know Bob doesn't like.
So you're saying to do the whole intersection?
I'm saying to to at least put them, put it on the table so that we can do it. And if we have to, if we have to pull back from that, then we've lost minimal stuff in terms of getting ready to do this.
So you're talking about the whole plan?
I'm talking about the doing the intersection according to options one and two or whatever they were. If you know what I'm talking about. Putting that on the table on March 12th so that we can go ahead with the planning phase of this is what why we got the March 12th deadline, right? So we can put that on the table. If we have to pull back from that, we haven't lost that much except what the planning phase is gonna cost. Is that an accurate assessment?
Well, a different way, design the project to include options one and two so that it's done. And then as we move a little further on and get additional information, if we wanna stop short of the intersection and finish the project in front of Fratello's, we do so when we keep things at status quo. So we've lost the designing work for across the intersection, but we don't have to execute the full plan.
That's why you're the city manager and I'm not. That's exactly right.
When you say full plan, you're talking about losing the six parking spaces, the whole bit.
Two lanes coming through, losing the six parking spaces, moving the sidewalk and having them merge, but not executing on it.
So two two paths have been outlined here. Does anybody else have their own? Okay, so what we need to do is come to a consensus on whether to follow path A or path B at this point in time.
I mean, I think what David is saying is is do it like a, what do they call that, a bid alternate?
Ad alt.
Ad alternate. In other words, you bid you bid the whole project, but you you have the authority to say, well, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
But the bid is in so that.
Well, we're not talking about construction costs here. We're talking about planning and engineering costs.
Yeah.
In other words, if we if we go ahead with David's idea, and I'm not advocating against it, because I personally am probably more in favor of his motion than 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 my own idea. I was just trying to get a consensus of whatever other people, wherever where everyone was at. But so what what if if David's idea is gains approval, then you'll do the engineering work for the whole project.
Correct.
And so if we decide at any point to pull back and not do it, then we've lost the cost we spent on engineering it.
Right.
Which we could use later on if we.
Which we could use later on. And, you know, we might have a, we might have a better idea about what parking is available, what we could do with the retaining wall, what all the other options, but.
So you're saying now authorize on March 12th the engineering of the whole project?
That's right. That's right.
All right, so let's try to get a consensus here. How many, how many of you would agree with Counselor Balance that we on we would aim on March 12th to authorize the engineering work to be done on the whole project as outlined? Mark is in agreement with that? Anyone else?
It's it's a tough call, I mean.
It's drum roll, please.
I just I just don't think, it's it's like you would say, Dave, I don't have enough information yet.
I'm a little nervous about the fact.
You're not gonna call for a public hearing, are you?
Well, I don't know, Dave.
Well, I I I am concerned about those counts. I'd like to see those as early as you can get them to us. And and if you wanna put a note on there, these, what your concerns about them are, that's fine.
Do these counts exist?
Yes, they do. I have the the state ones, and don't quote me.
So you have a count of how many people turn right on Elm Street?
We did a count for one day after Labor Day.
Okay.
To do to do the, figure out how to do the timing adjustment. That's all we've got. Other than the state count, which is what a full day is, which doesn't tell you peak or anything.
But worst case, we could send somebody up there with a.
We've got that. We've got that right now. I mean, until we hit summer again, we won't get.
Time of year or two, and time of day, and there's all kinds of variables there.
Between now and and then, can can you do a count or is that?
It's what we have.
Matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Until you get until you get after Memorial Day, we start having the summer traffic.
Well, Lake Region Planning Commission has traffic counts for Union Avenue in general, Upper Union Avenue, right?
But what they don't have is they don't have the counts that you need for a traffic study in an intersection, which is hour-by-hour counts.
Right.
We'll get you what we have and we can see what else we need.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I only counted two counselors being in favor of that path. The other path was, in lieu of another suggestion, would be to to put this under this issue under old business while we explore other other options. And and on March 12th, Mr. Anderson would get back to us with more information, including whether or not we could stop the north project, the north side of the intersection project short of the intersection and avoid that engineering cost now of redoing the lights and whatnot. So we would have, we'd be up fronting nothing or putting nothing at risk doing that.
Basically, it's the the option of gaining more information before making a decision, right?
I'm sorry.
It's the option of gaining more information before making a decision.
Yeah, basically.
So let's let's take that, move on. This is getting more painful than the school votes, really.
So how many would be in favor of taking, how many in favor would be be in favor of taking that general approach? One, two, three. All right.
So if you would take the motion as to table this item tonight and then refer it to the agenda in two weeks, we'll just leave it there and come back sooner with you. We'll get you it electronically, but we can continue the discussion.
Motion in order to table this item and put it under under unfinished business.
Yeah, I guess I guess my whole thought is what's the likelihood of?
Wait a minute, we got, somebody made a motion? Counselor Balance made the motion. Is there a second?
What?
Counselor Chaney, seconds at discussion.
What was his motion on? What you wanted to do?
No, my motion was to table until March.
Oh, okay.
Until March 12th.
All right. My only thought is is that we look into the feasibility of acquiring a property there and do an off-street.
Yeah, that could be part of that.
That's part of this.
Getting more information, Buck.
Yeah, it's part of, as Counselor Lippman is summarizing, Plan B is to get more information, basically.
All right. I'm good.
Any discussion, further discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, affirmative motion carries. All right, so do you have a general understanding of what we're?
Yes, I do.
The direction? You get a prize.
Because I don't.
All right, that's it for new business tonight. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Oh, that was unfinished business. We had no new business. I didn't realize we were doing unfinished business that whole time, so, sorry. Counsel comments? Counselor Balance.
I have one comment. I don't want an answer tonight. I don't wanna prolong the meeting. I don't wanna do anything. But I'd like to start getting my hands around what the county budget's, how that's gonna impact us going down the road. That's my request.
Anyone else? Counsel comments? Okay, we have a need for a brief non-public session tonight. And so I would entertain a motion to enter non-public session under ninety-one A, paragraph C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such person requests an open meeting. Can I add that motion, please? Someone, Counsel Lippman, seconded by Counsel Hamel. All right, a motion has been made to go into non-public session, and I'd ask, we need a record vote on this. So I'd ask the clerk to call, roll yes or no.
Counsel Chaney?
Yes.
Counselor Balance?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary.
All right, we are in non-public session.